Cue video.
I'm driving in, just now.
Meeting will come to order. Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, October 4th, 2016 Mercer Island City Council meeting. We begin this evening with call to order and roll call, and then we're going to go into the study session, and I guess I've got a couple of other things I've got to get through first. But Karen, could you call the roll?
Councilmember Dan Grousne.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Sanderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wendy Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember David Wiesentiner.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you very much. All right. First item of business is agenda approval. Is there any change anybody would like to make to the agenda, or is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carries. So we'll move now to a study session. This is Agenda Bill 5201. Sorry, 5201. Make up numbers as I do this. Remind the public that when we're having study sessions, we often have a meal associated with those, and so forgive the informality that we have as we're dining and participating in the study session, but that's, that has been our tradition. And the Agenda Bill is 5201, fire sprinkler requirements for new residential construction. And we have with us tonight our Chief Steve Heitman and Fire Marshal Herschel Rostov. So welcome, gentlemen, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Steve Heitman, your Fire Chief. Members of Council, we're here tonight to present to you information on a recommendation for moving forward with the new Mercer Island City Code Ordinance, requiring the mandatory installation of residential fire sprinklers in all new construction of single-family, two-family, townhouses, and townhouses. This will also include substantial remodels, which are currently treated as new construction once they reach the threshold where the cost of the remodel exceeds 50% of the valuation of the property. We're also proposing with this for that valuation of using the already approved method by Council in the permitting process. Residential fire sprinklers save lives. Smoke alarms alert occupants to the presence of danger from smoke and fire, but they do nothing to extinguish the fire or contain it. Thirty-seven percent of fire deaths occur in homes where there are working smoke alarms. People often assume that today's newly constructed homes are safer than older construction. This isn't necessarily true. With today's lightweight construction materials, once they are impinged upon by fire, they tend to fail faster and they burn more quickly. As you'll see in our video presentation, the time for occupants to get out of a structure is critical, and fire sprinklers provide that critical time. Mercer Island currently has a city ordinance, MICC Chapter 17.16, which requires the installation of residential fire sprinklers in all new construction with a gross floor area greater than 5,000 square feet, including townhouses with an aggregate area greater than 5,000 square feet, and in additions and substantial alterations resulting in a gross floor area greater than 5,000 square feet, with a one-time exception for additions up to 750 square feet, and those must be recorded upon the title. We have this ordinance in place with the intent to help keep the fire contained in order to allow the occupants to get out of the structure, time for fire department resources to respond and arrive on scene, and supplement our initial staffing levels. As you know, we have seven firefighters on duty. Your average house fire requires about 35 firefighters these days, once it's up and running. That's because we have a number of teams that are involved in it, from ventilation group to a search group, to a fire attack group, to a rehab group, to an air unit, to an MSO medical unit taking care of the firefighters who are responding, and we have to rotate those crews out. We also need backup crews that in case we have an emergency with our own fire crews, there's a team waiting on standby to go in and rescue our firefighters. In addition to the information contained in Chapter 17.16, residential fire sprinklers can be required during a plan review based upon the evaluation of fire flow, hydrant locations or spacing, and access to the residence. Not being able to meet fire code requirement in these three key areas can result in the installation of fire sprinklers after a review by the Fire Marshal's office. Mercer Island has many areas that cannot meet one or all of these requirements that are set forth as per the fire code. Over the last five years, the number of projects involving the above-listed construction types that I mentioned earlier and requiring the installation of fire sprinklers has ranged between 85 and 92% of all projects. What we're looking to do is bridge that gap for safety. Safety shouldn't be limited to anything over 5,000 square feet, even though smaller homes need to be as safe. Under the current process, when a permit is submitted for construction projects consisting of those types, the single-family, the two-family, and the townhouse or substantial alteration, it's required to have a fire review. Once it is determined that the project has deficiencies in any of the three key areas, the permit application is returned with the need for the applicant to submit code alternates that are equivalent or better to those aspects of the fire code which the project does not Code alternates consist of the installation of a monitored fire alarm system, no burn, which is a chemical retardant that's sprayed in the attic or crawl space, heat detection in the attic, drywall with a higher fire rating, a yard hydrant, which is a water supply down near the structure rather than us having to just get our water from the nearest fire hydrant, or increased access, which can include slope of the driveway, the width of the driveway, or providing a turnaround for fire department apparatus. I know some of you are aware of the long driveways we have. Try backing a 45,000 pound vehicle out of there. Fire Department does not make recommendations on code alternates, since this could lead to a liability issue on our part. This requires the applicant or their agent to do so. With some projects, the code alternate process can cause significant delays in the project itself due to the fact that we're passing back and forth these code alternate recommendations. This can create tension between the applicant in the city, the applicant in the fire department, and sometimes departments within the city, depending on the process and how long it takes. What Mercer Island Fire is trying to do is propose mandatory residential fire sprinklers in all new types of construction projects and substantial alterations in order to increase the safety of our citizens, which we will highlight in our presentation, and to streamline this permitting process. Fire Marshal Rostov will now show you, we're going to show you a quick video that shows the difference between smoke alarms, sprinklers, and he's going to do a presentation to educate you a little bit on sprinkler systems and what we're currently doing, review some of this, and then we'll have a question and answer period.
For the record, Herschel Rostov, Fire Marshal. We'll go ahead and start with the video. Sir, how do we modify the volume? It's up. Yeah. I mean, it says it's all the way up, but there's no volume.
The Orange County Fire Authority had a unique opportunity to show the effectiveness of residential sprinklers at a Tustin Air Station. We took two buildings that were fire-loaded the same, which means the combustible material inside the buildings were as close to identical as possible. The only difference between the two was one was equipped with fire sprinklers while the other was not.
This room is furnished to represent a typical bedroom. There are pictures on the wall, drapes covering the windows, a bed with pillows and blankets as well as other items. The fire is started in a trash can. As the fire grows, it starts to make a run-up the drapes. It takes just 60 seconds to activate the smoke alarm down the hall. As the temperature rises and the toxic smoke becomes dense, your chance of survival decreases by the second. The temperature in the room has risen so fast that your next breath would sear the lining of your lungs if the toxic smoke hasn't already taken your life. Listen closely. You can hear the hallway smoke alarm melting as the fire, radiant heat, and smoke spread throughout the rest of the structure. This time, smoke and flames attract neighbors' attention.
Fire emergency. I'm walking by a residence at 6830 Super Stallion, and there's fire and smoke actually coming out of an upstairs window.
Once the 911 call has been received, it will take approximately six minutes until the first unit arrives on scene.
125, enter 222. We have a six-story residential well involved. We have it on the second floor. Second alarm.
Requesting 222, copy your request for a second alarm. Six blocks well involved. Battalion 1.
It is now thirteen and a half minutes into the burn, and the entire room is engulfed in flames. As firefighters enter the structure, they must first extinguish fire that has spread throughout the building, and then make their way towards the point of origin. In this room, the smoke alarm was placed in the bedroom and activates 10 seconds after ignition. In the previous burn, the smoke alarm was located in the hallway and took approximately a minute to activate. We see the same fire behavior displayed as before as it rises from the trash can and continues to grow and become hotter. As it grows and consumes the combustibles on the wall, the fire begins to roll across the ceiling. The sprinkler then activates, cooling down the room, and within minutes puts out the fire. Keep in mind, in the previous burn, the fire department didn't even arrive until six minutes after the 911 call.
Common sense would tell you that sprinklers are a good thing, but I had no idea of how dramatic sprinklers can be in actually putting out fires without the presence of firefighters. On the non-sprinkled side, there was total devastation. The only thing that remained was the frame of the bed and wire hangers in the closet where the clothes once hung.
The fire gutted the entire room. When you looked at the damage throughout the rest of the structure, what I thought was interesting was there was still a substantial amount of damage, but there was no what we call fire loading in the rest of the building, which would mean furniture and other combustibles. So it completely destroyed that entire room.
In fire prevention, what really surprised us was the temperature, and not the temperature at the ceiling, which we expected to rise quickly, but how quickly the temperature rose at the lower levels. Within two minutes, it was over 200 degrees, which made it an untenable space. On the sprinkled side, it was a completely different story. As the fire moved up the walls and started lapping at the ceiling, sprinkler activated and extinguished the fire within a very short period of time. We had a little bit of scorching on the wall, some damage to the container where the origin of the fire was in the trash can, and a little bit of water, and that was pretty much it.
There's no question that fire sprinklers save lives. There's no question that they work. The reason why you don't care about it is that it is a non-news event, in that nobody dies, seldom is there an injury, and there's very little property damage. We'll respond units, by the time we get there, we cancel the rest of units, a small mop-up operation, and that's all that's done.
I understand that developers, people who build homes and apartments and commercial buildings, have a lot of heartburn over sprinklers because they do add cost, they add expense to construction. But I would suggest to you that any developer, any builder who actually sees a demonstration, a real-life demonstration of what sprinklers do, will change their mind rather quickly.
What really convinced me was how quickly the sprinklers attacked the fire, how quickly the temperatures dropped, and would have given, I think, any occupant a reasonable opportunity to get out.
So I've got a quick PowerPoint for you that will go through some details about fire sprinklers and give you some background on it. So how do fire sprinklers work? I think all of us see them in movies, and so we're going to give you a little more realistic approach to how they actually operate as opposed to in movies. In a sprinkler system, we have pipes that are installed in the walls and ceilings. It's just the same as any other plumbing system in your house that has water in it, and then it's ready to respond to a fire if there is one. Sprinkler heads, as opposed in movies, are heat-sensitive individually. They are not sensitive to smoke, and so each one reacts to the heat that's directly near the sprinkler head. So if you had several sprinkler heads in a room, then a small fire would activate the sprinkler head directly above the fire, and other sprinkler heads within the space would generally not activate. If it got bigger, then several sprinkler heads may activate. So it's not like where you see all the sprinkler heads and the whole building go off all at once. Generally, it's the closest. In 90% of fires, they're contained by just one sprinkler head, and sprinkler pipes are no more likely to leak or break than any other pipes in your house. We take specific precautions to make them even safer by what we call tenting above them, and they're like any other pipe that has water in it. They use the same materials and those sorts of things. When you think about a sprinkler head, often you see this big spray of water coming out of it. A typical sprinkler head really flows about 13 gallons a minute. So that's a lot smaller than our manual approach. If we showed up afterwards to fight a fire with a fire hose, we're going to be flowing as much as 125 gallons a minute. So getting direct application of small amounts of water early in the process before the fire takes off causes a lot less damage because it can be controlled at a smaller stage. We can get there and shut off the water, and you have a much smaller amount of water. Fire departments typically use about 10 times the amount of water compared to sprinkler systems by research that's been done, and that there's an average fire loss reduction by 70% with a sprinkler system. So if you think about, sprinkler system has one head that activates directly over where the fire actually is. It's very efficient, so the water goes where it's needed. For us, the whole house has had time, the fire's had time to grow by the time we get there, so there's a much bigger fire, and we need to use a lot more water in order to get into the building, to get to the place where the fire actually started. So much more of the building's involved, and a lot more water is used. And one of the benefits that is shown because of the, because we can see that there are reduced costs to insurance companies is they've actually reduced the costs of premiums by eight to 12% typically for houses that are sprinkled. And so why do we need sprinklers? You look at statistics, in the U.S., 2,500 or so deaths every year from home fires, and 85% of all the fire deaths are in homes. So even today, in modern society, we have pretty significant fire losses, and we can make a big impact by putting fire sprinklers in homes where a majority of the deaths are happening. And fires kill more than all natural disasters combined. In addition to the deaths, we can also look at the injuries, and 13,000-plus injuries at a cost of $1.5 billion a year are a result of fires. So most people are going to ask, well, why are we approaching this today? Why are we talking about it? Is this a new problem? One of the things that's changed, while many may think that newer houses and newer construction are safer, and there definitely have been improvements and benefits, like the chief pointed to earlier, the newer building materials are primarily made of glues and/or plastics, or small pieces of wood that have been glued together, and therefore, when they come apart, they burn much more aggressively. And we look at the fire release, for example, on a plastic item in a house releases almost four times the amount of heat at once compared to something like just a wood stud, wood. And so these advances in technology have also caused much hotter fires and fires that happen faster and grow faster, and that the newer techniques produce less mass in the materials. So if you think about these I-frame joists, they're not as big as a full 2x6 or 2x12 would be, so the ability for a fire to burn through something that is smaller and thinner happens a lot faster than something that has that huge mass and density to it. So the newer materials have had an effect on the way we fight fire and on how long a fire is sustainable for us to go in and do anything, and also for people that are within the building. So the first place, I guess, to start, in order to understand where we're going, is what are our current requirements? So right now, current ordinance that's in place and fire code requirements, and there are various places throughout our code that point to different requirements. It's just not the one sprinkler ordinance that we referenced earlier. But the first piece is that we have a 5,000-square-foot threshold, so any building over 5,000 square feet is required to have a sprinkler system. Currently, substantial alterations that either have fire deficiencies or are greater than 5,000 square feet require a sprinkler system. So even a 3,000-square-foot house, for example, that is a substantial alteration and has fire deficiencies would be required currently to have a sprinkler system. Fire deficiency would be about those other code sections that we'll hit on. In broad categories, we're talking about fire access, how steep a road is, how wide is it, is there a turnaround? Is it easy to get there, or does it delay our operations because of the physical geography of that road? Fire flow is how much water is there in the piping system and hydrant system, so that if we do need to manually fight a fire, do we have the water and capability to do that? And then the hydrant spacing and other things that have to do with hydrant. So those are the things that are deficiencies where we aren't able to meet the fire code, and that's kind of where that code alternate process that we've hinted at here comes to place, is the code says one thing, but we frequently can't meet the code here because of our difficult topography and water, and so the code alternate process falls in place so that people can propose alternate ways to protect their house in lieu of meeting the code requirements. So fire flow, I take the 4,800-square-foot example here because that's where we jump in fire flow. If you look at a 4,800-square-foot house, that per the fire code would require 2,000 gallons a minute of water flow to fight a fire in that house manually with firefighters and fire engines. And generally, and it would require by code a second hydrant to be available for that firefighting. And typically, the design standards on the island are laid out so that we typically have 1,000 to 1,500 gallons a minute in most water main systems throughout the island. It obviously varies, but with an island that doesn't have a lot of through-roads through streets to run mains down, it limits our ability to loop water and have really high flow numbers in the water system. Another current requirement, so hydrants and spacing is a deficiency, and then fire access roads are the other types of deficiencies.
Can I ask a question? You know, the fire flow, the hydrants, and the fire access, I note that they're also mentioned in page one of the Agenda Bill. Are these things actually found in other parts of the code? Because your Agenda Bill also mentioned that, you know, the public is sometimes confused or surprised because they just focus on the 5,000 gross square foot item. And so are these things readily found, or are they sort of just scattered throughout the code?
The fire code covers a lot of different subjects, and these are in different chapters of the fire code. There's a chapter that is called Fire Protection Features that includes fire access roads and fire hydrants, because those are features. There's a section in the code book that talks about fire suppression systems, and it talks about the requires for a sprinkler system. There are two appendant, three appendixes that we use, B, C, and D, which relate to hydrant spacing, fire flow. hydrant spacing, fire flow, and driveway access. So yes, they are scattered throughout the code book, but they're put into what we would consider appropriate sections of the code book that relate to the topic that they're under.
And that's why it takes years to get a fire marshal trained.
And as we alluded to earlier, currently 85 to 92% of all of our projects that have been single-family houses on the island over the last five years, that's how many of them we've been installing sprinkler systems as a code requirement over the last five years.
Just a question regarding that last statistic.
Yeah.
Do you have a further breakdown of that 85 to 92%? Are most of those a function of being 5,000 square feet and greater or is it because the majority have some deficiency somewhere else? It'd be interesting for me to know how much of this is a function of size and how much this is arguably the island's infrastructure.
Right. So flow, fire flow is triggered and required. A certain amount of water is tied to the square footage of a building. So even though we have a 5,000-square-foot ordinance that triggers that requirement, the truth is, once you hit 4,800 square feet, that size dictates that you have that 2,000 gallons a minute and the two hydrants within 300 feet of the house and all these other requirements that we just can't meet with our water infrastructure in almost all cases. So even though the 5,000-square-foot ordinance is what people are familiar with and what they think is triggering their requirement, the truth is, in almost all cases, it's fire flow. Secondary to that is probably driveway access because we have narrower roads, winding, difficult access, as we can imagine. So if I had to make a guess, that would be our first. What I see most on plan reviews is that it's based on fire flow and then secondary is due to access. Substantial alterations, I'm sure there will be lots of questions about substantial alterations. So I thought we would talk about the process a little bit. So even our current ordinance addresses the concept of if you do a really big remodel project, and the way we currently define really big remodel project is by saying that's 50% or greater of the assessed value of the building, that triggers it as a really big building process or a substantial alteration.
So can you clarify, so is it the assessed value of the property, meaning land plus structure, or just the structure?
Just the structure.
Okay.
Yep. It is of just the structure. So the first piece of this is that a lot of our plan review process for remodel projects is based on and starts with the concept evaluation. We start with looking at how, what percentage of work of dollar value are you doing compared to the overall value of your house? And we have three thresholds. We have a less than 10% where there's no requirement. There's a 10 to 50% where you're kind of semi-grandfathered in by needing to install a fire alarm system which alerts us and gets us there faster. And then there's this substantial alteration that we're talking about which is triggered at 50% or greater. So one of the things that we're trying to do tonight with this discussion is we're trying to change the approach of what we call valuation. In '04, I believe, when the original ordinance was put in place, King County assessors did their valuation differently. And currently, we're having a hard time really comparing and getting true numbers for what a building, building's structure's value is worth. And what I mean by that is if you go to the database and you look at the number, what we're finding is very low home values and really high property values, which is the way the county is doing their process now. And when we look at a house, we think about what would the construction cost really be to build that house and is that fair? And we are bound to use the assessed value because that's what our ordinance says. And part of our new proposal is to use the valuation system that you, the council members, have already put in place and that we're using for a permit fee process, which is already how we determine values and the way we charge permit fees. So we want to change from the assessed value model to this new, to use the same system that we use for that.
So I'm curious.
Yeah.
Chief, the, I mean, this came up in the library, as you will recall, that the library, when they went in with the system that you're now describing that you want to go to would not have been required to install a sprinkler, but because our codes had assessed value, they initially were required to install a sprinkler until they significantly scaled back the extent of the proposal. So I, what I take from that is that what the proposal will do will actually reduce the number of sprinklers being installed. Since that movie is, is very much in my memory banks right now and just heard for a half hour why it's important to install sprinklers, I'm curious why when it comes to remodels, we're taking the opposite approach and effectively putting in a system which will reduce the number of sprinkler installations.
I think we're changing the valuation approach because we're trying to get something that is more, I guess, more realistic is kind of the, to look at a house property that's valued at a million and a half dollars, for example, and the structure is valued at 300,000 of that million and a half, that's not, it's not reasonable to expect that that's really the value of that structure. So we're merely trying to be more aligned with kind of the reality out there.
Well, and I understand the rationale behind it, but just the bottom line seems to be that you'll end up with less sprinklers, which is the opposite of what the direction you wanted us to go on new construction. So I, I understand why you're doing what you're doing and I understand the fairness part of it, but it strikes me that if the goal was to increase the number of sprinklers for the reasons you spent the first part of this study session, now we seem to be going the opposite direction when it comes to remodels.
Because right now, if we continue to use that evaluation, somebody adds a kitchen and maybe a bedroom above it. And with the current greater than 50%, now they're going to be required to put sprinklers throughout the rest of their home. And that can cause challenges. There are some things that can be done with the flow-through systems. They can be added to their current water system. They can use PEX, flexible piping for these things. But it adds a significant burden to the homeowner. So we're trying to be sensitive to that. Whereas with the valuation system we're proposing, typically the majority of those, when they open up that house for that remodel, they're stripping the entire inside of the home and, and much more accessible and able to put in that, that sprinkler system based upon that cost.
Yeah, is it, is it IRIS briefcase that's making the noise or is it someone else? It's, it's our system here? Okay. Okay.
I think some of it too is to try to be sensitive to what we've seen in plan review processes. And like the chief said, we get people that come in and want to replace their cabinets in their kitchen and countertops. And because of the way the King County assessment is set up, we are then requiring it as a substantial alteration and then would be moving into fire sprinklers. So we're trying to be sensitive to when are they really doing a construction project in the house and when are they doing just a facelift, if you will, of the area? And so I think that's what we're trying to be sensitive of. And it's in response to the original ordinance that that was kind of the direction of the original ordinance was to create this barrier and this threshold of a substantial alteration of where substantial alteration gets treated as new and things that are not a substantial alteration didn't get treated as new. And so we were following the approach that the council had when they voted on that and approved that ordinance.
Remember, is they're still going to be evaluated for those deficiencies. And so if they're not meeting fire flow, if they're not meeting that hydrant spacing, that can still lead to, even though it wasn't a substantial alteration, that they could end up having a sprinkler system in order to be fired.
So yeah, Benson's going to go, Wendy, I know he's got a bunch of questions. We're at 15 minutes until we try to be done. How many more slides have you got and where are we in terms of your presentation?
Near the end, I probably have, I probably have three or four more slides.
Okay. Benson, why don't you go and then we'll try and get through the rest of these slides and.
So this new valuation process or the one that you would make consistent with, I guess, can you explain that to me one more time, just sort of the math behind that?
Yeah.
I, I want to know, because I think Dan's right. I think the end result is going to be potentially fewer sprinkler systems, but I guess I want to understand the math.
I would agree with you. I think that it will be fewer sprinkler systems than using an assessed value. I think that's accurate. The math of how it works is that the council's established, and I believe it's $159 a square foot as the threshold for what you, the value per square foot of a home. And we would look at the square footage of the home. We would add that fee to it, call that the cost of the home. And that's the same way that we assess a value to, in, in our tracking program to be able to come up with the fees that we're charging for permit fees. So it's, it's simply a dollar per square foot value that's been assigned. We would take the square footage of the structure and go that route.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Go ahead and.
And I think, let's see if we, so I would talk about the impacts here. One of the big subjects that came up in our meetings that we had was the discussion about water meters and, because water meters is one of the highest costs in a sprinkler system if you need to change or modify for a, or add a new water meter to the house. Because of the sprinkler system, it's one of the highest costs. And so that's, as you can imagine, a high concern from the builders. And so we're able to use current meters if, if it works and passes the test, so the system will function and that it's allowed by the other parts of the building department and other codes that we use. In addition, there's new technology that the chief talked about, which is this PEX and flexible piping. So that like, like flexible wires that you can cut a hole over here and cut a hole over there and fish the wires through, it's a little bit easier than hard pipe to get flexible pipe through. And so retrofitting even buildings without sheet rock removal is easier than it has been in past years to do that and has less impact than the original technologies did. And we do want to be transparent and it is clear that substantial alterations, the installation is higher than the numbers we'll give you for, for regular construction. And it's simply because you're working within the infrastructure and construction of an existing house and you have to work around what's there. So our sprinkler proposal, I think we're familiar with, one, single-family, two-family, and IRC townhomes. And that we will be doing substantial alterations, we'll also have all substantial alterations, we'll have sprinkler systems. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So the impact, so we went, so wanted to go through and spell out the impacts of making this change. We specifically talked to three of the most, three of the largest companies that do most of the sprinkler projects on Mercer Island that do standard sprinkler installation. They pulled either six months or a year of actual houses installed on Mercer Island, took their numbers, and the numbers there are what is actually being, those are the actual costs of installation here on Mercer Island for standard sprinkler system. The fourth number, the $3 a square foot, was from a company that's doing flow-through systems and the company that does most of the flow-through systems. And those are the PEX systems that are tied into the traditional plumbing in the house. And so as you can see, our range is really from $1.81 to $3 a square foot for sprinkler pricing for a basic installation on the island. Obviously, there are huge ranges, but that, that's what we've gotten from the companies that do most of the work on the island. When you look at the average construction cost on the island, we pulled statistics for this year and the average construction value on the island, not including land, is 787, 940. So almost $800,000 in construction cost. And of just under a $10,000 sprinkler system, which would be the equivalent of what that size house would need, you're looking at about 1.2% of the overall construction cost of a home here on Mercer Island. One of the changes we made two years ago, early on, when I started in the fire marshal position, was we removed the 1-1/2-inch meter size and we now allow as small as a 1-inch meter as long as they can pass the flow test. The benefit is, is that the difference between a 1-inch meter and an inch and a half can range from 3,000 to 5,000 extra dollars. And a 1-inch meter happens to be the standard size that the plumbing code requires in most cases for a house. So a sprinkler system does not necessarily trigger a larger water meter and so those costs would be costs you'd have anyway in new construction. Sometimes you have a larger supply line, that is typical, but less expensive because you're doing the work already. Trade-ups for sprinkler installation, when you install a sprinkler system, since we consider it the best and most effective method for fire protection, then we get to trade away some of these deficiencies we talked about earlier like fire access, hydrant flow, those sorts of things are, we're given that extra benefit of being allowed to reduce those things with a sprinkler system installed. And those are things that we currently already do. We're just making the process easier by having that requirement upfront instead of making people go through the code alternate process and ultimately ending up in more or less the same place. The other, the other piece is that part of what we're trying to improve here is the process for the builders and for architects is that right now, people design a building, they get bids, they figure out pricing, they go into their, draw everything up, go into their pre-app meeting. And then at that point, we start the process of figuring out whether you need a sprinkler system or not. And so it's hard to budget if you don't know whether you're going to need that item in your costing or not. And so this process would tell people upfront before they even designed their building that they could put that in and know what the costs are going to be upfront, which helps for costs and they don't need to change their plans around and has less impact because they can start from the very beginning that way. Smoke alarm versus sprinklers, together, I think each part is necessary. Smoke alarms is wonderful and sprinkler systems are wonderful. Together, they work as a system to provide early notification and a system that slows down the fire growth enough to get people out of the building. Smoke alarms are not always reliable simply because people don't replace the batteries, they make noise, people pull them off the ceiling. At 18 years on the line as a firefighter, I saw many houses, we'd go in on aid calls and there were no smoke detectors, just wires hanging from the ceiling. And so that's a benefit of going to sprinkler approach and also having fire alarms because together they combine to be a better system. There's been some recent tests that show that certain populations, elderly and kids, don't wake up to the sound of smoke detectors as easily as we once thought. And so they've changed some code requirements, but that's a condition or something to consider about smoke alarms. And then impaired people, people who've been, you know, drinking or drugs, elderly, children or people that have been, that are disabled, it may take them longer to get out of a building. And so buying additional time by a sprinkler system helps them get out quickly. We did a focus group, emailed 300 builders. We ended up with having two meetings with a handful of people in each of the meetings. We had some questions here that people. We had some questions here that people brought up for discussion. I was, I was surprised by the quantity of people, frankly, that showed up at these. And so, since I see lots of builders out in the field while I'm doing inspections, I've had candid discussions with them, why weren't you at these meetings? And well, the most common answer was, well, we're putting sprinkler systems in most of the houses we do on the island anyway, it wasn't worth really coming in and having a discussion about it because we're already doing that. It's not a concern of ours. And that's what I heard personally from a lot of contractors, because I was wondering why we weren't getting a lot of people. We turn these sessions into an opportunity to learn from the contractors and get feedback from them about ways we can improve our process. And a lot of the presentation I gave you about water meter sizing and those sorts of things are things that grew out of those discussions, and we've improved our process and our rules around this based on the feedback that we've had. And so we'll give you an opportunity to ask some questions.
Wendy, we're sort of on the edge of out of time. I know you have a stack of them. And let's, I don't see a big audience tonight. We may just want to run this over so that we can actually complete this item, but I'll be looking for council input on that in the next few minutes. You're obviously looking to end up at some clear guidance from the council so that you decide where to go going forward. So we're going to take questions, and then we're going to try and answer questions you have of us in terms of direction forward. So let's, Wendy, why don't you take a first bite at this, and then we'll, I'm going to come back to you and say, what do you need us to answer for you, and then we'll try and get to that.
Hold on. Steve, do you have, do you, either one of you have a radio on? Your radio on? Okay.
Wait, microphone?
Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate you're giving us all the background and the documentation. I know the master builder sent us some email yesterday. I'm curious why we're doing this now. My understanding is there are seven cities in the whole state that have done this, three of the 39 cities in King County. I'm worried about our lack of public engagement with single-family residential owners, not just the builders. And I'm thinking about the costs that I've heard from other homeowners who've done the fire sprinklers and the monthly monitoring, and the additional fire suppression systems when they're doing a remodel or new construction. And all of that I've been hearing for a while, so that's a three-part question. Why now? Why so fast? And what can we do to make this easier for our owners, not just our builders, to absorb these costs that I'm hearing are upwards of $25,000 per home? And in a time when, when we're trying to talk about affordable housing, this is just one more cost, it's a fixed cost, and if we can help some residents up on Mercer Dale that don't need to install a $25,000 system with $50 a month monitoring, I'd love to help that 10%, you know, be safe in their homes, but also not have to incur this, this huge cost.
We initially were going to bring this forward when we were doing the building code updates. This was part of that group, so it's not a sudden thing. We had this ready to launch for a while, and it was decided at the last minute to pull that from that because we know it's going to be a complex issue, and we didn't want it to get lost within there and give the opportunity for feedback. So that is one of the reasons we've been looking at this for a while. Again, we're trying to make up that gap. Mercer Island is a very unique community, so when you're talking about affordable housing, I think we need to define that a little bit. This cost, and we're not writing off the cost, but compared to other communities, the cost of these isn't necessarily as great of a percentage of building a home or remodeling a home as it is in other areas for that. But we do recognize that that is an issue. Second part of your, you had, why now?
What's it that?
Coming in as a study session, we wanted to educate council on this issue because it is a lot to take on. We're not asking for council to approve this tonight. We're asking for council to look at this and give us the opportunity to educate you on this, and then go forward with your direction from here, so that we can look at altering that ordinance if council agrees to that.
Can I keep going? Was there any talk of including this in the single-family residential code update? I mean, we have 17 items. Is this, Dan's shaking his head now?
Are you talking international residential code?
That might be a good idea. Just the fire code process and building and remodels and...
It, I think Mayor Bassett mentioned that, but that's a land use code update that's going on right now with the residential code. This is a construction issue, not a land use issue for that. So that's why it's not included with the residential code update.
And I can address a couple of things that you mentioned. Also, you mentioned monitoring for sprinkler systems and ongoing costs. Monitoring is not part of most sprinkler systems. That's generally something that somebody requests as a code alternate. When people come to us with a code alternate, our job is to evaluate, did they pitch something that meets the intent of the code or not? It's not our position to tell them what to install. So sometimes people aim a little higher and end up with more requirements because they're being the fire code expert. We're trying to change the process so that we can put those things forward, so that we can have the minimum requirements that provide the highest level of safety. And so a standard sprinkler system does not require monitoring and would not be covered in the ordinance we're talking about. That would be an additional thing that may be triggered by other, other things like access and those kind of things too, but is not typical. The second piece is that from a cost perspective, like any construction project that's out there, I'm sure that there's a whole range of prices. We did a lot of research, and we pulled actual building projects from the contractors that are doing the work here. And so I feel pretty confident, I spoke to them myself on that, and I'm pretty confident at the dollar numbers that people are coming up with.
All right. Let's, before I get more questions here, I'm going to ask, what do you want to hear from us, so that we can get to those, to those discussions?
Next step, how does council want to further evaluate this? And again, we've got a draft ordinance at the city attorney's office now that they are reviewing. And so the next step for us would be, if council's agreeable, to bring this forward for a first reading.
Are there any key things you need us to give you in terms of guidance, I mean, other than just yes, no, bring it forward or don't bring it forward? Is there anything else you're looking for right now from us? All right. Debbie?
It's just sort of one, one principle, point of clarification. So really, what this proposed change would impact is really the remodels that are going on on the island right now. Because you're saying that such a significant percentage of new construction's already covered, correct? So we've got 80-something to 90-something of new construction already has this, based on deficiencies, based on the size of the house, et cetera. So the community that this is really impacting are the people who are undergoing medium to substantial remodels. That's the new population that's going to be impacted. Is that a fair assessment?
I would say that is a fair assessment. We are affecting those 30 houses or so that that are new construction that didn't get done.
The 8 to 12% in that range?
Correct. Yeah. But I think the ordinance of the substantial alteration, especially if we change the valuation, is actually going to decrease the number of installations. So I think that's the impact.
Yeah. And I would also just say, to the extent that anybody cares, it was a little bit like hearing our building life story presented right there in terms of numbers and experience and finding out about fire suppression when we came in for a pre-app meeting, which was a surprise and everything else. So I would say that at least as far as I was concerned, your representation was frighteningly accurate.
Dan?
So I think Debbie's point is, is, it's still problematic to me, just because the whole purpose of this presentation is fire safety, and yet the net result of this will be less installations. So that there's some, there's a disconnect there. And I would just encourage you to really think about the consequences of what you're asking the council to do. I think it's great that if you've made a professional determination that we need to get that extra 15% or somewhere between 7% and 15%, I have no problem supporting you on that. But I have a hard time, under the guise of fire safety, passing an ordinance that will actually have an overall reduction in the number of installations. So I mean, if that's what comes to the council, I'll probably, I personally would vote against it, even though I understand exactly your rationale. But I can't, I personally cannot get behind an ordinance that says fire safety but reduces the number of sprinklers. And so that's all I would suggest is, you know, I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but maybe, you know, looking at $179 a square foot, I have no idea where that number came from. I know you said we passed that, and I can assure you that, I can ask every one of us on the council, I don't think any one of us could tell you where we passed $179 a square foot, or that we gave any moment of thought to the significance of that number. But I just, yeah, I mean, Chief, you were talking about how it's much easier now to install these, and technology is simpler, and the cost is simpler, and Herschel was telling us about how, you know, we can get in with smaller meters and with 1-inch meters instead of 1 1/2 inch meters. And yet, after telling us all this, we're still going to reduce the number of sprinklers at the end of the day. So I just, there's a disconnect there in my mind, and I hope you'll address that somehow.
Maybe the guidance we're looking for is, should we be separating this and approaching all new sprinkler systems and doing the ordinance like we're talking about? And should we rethink about the approach that we're taking on the valuation, or how we're determining which remodel or substantial alteration projects? Maybe that's the direction we're looking for from council.
So we're at 6:58. We're either going to give you very cursory feedback here, or we're going to go a bit longer and give you at least a little bit more. Council, any input for me as to whether we keep going for a bit on this?
Keep going.
All right. Hearing "keep going." So clearly, we got a question of whether we're bringing it back at all, and then there's a secondary question of what we're doing that we may or may not address here, whether we're going to offer you input about the valuation scheme that's proposed. Benson?
Just a couple of things. I mean, I sent the chief a question earlier to that point that you just raised about the ability to separate new construction versus substantial alterations. So that's, I guess I'm curious, and whether or not you guys know, you know, obviously there's six other cities that have passed similar ordinances, what the impact has been, and whether or not those cities have segregated or separated out new construction versus substantial alterations, and how they value, you know, what kind of valuation system do they have for substantial alterations? Is it something similar to what you're proposing, or is it assessed value?
I spoke to two of the fire marshals today, specifically to that question, ones that we work with a lot, Redmond and North Shore. They both do substantial alterations. They both use King County assessor database based on the current ordinance. We all went in together on the current ordinance. Redmond uses 100% valuation, and North Shore uses 50% valuation, which is the same that we do. So that's how they're doing it. Redmond, however, also concedes that any building that has any level of construction going on, a remodel or anything that has a fire flow deficiency, requires full sprinkler system retrofit for the whole building. So no matter what size or no matter what value of the construction, they require a retrofit for the whole building. They haven't had in the, they've had no complaints filed from the public. They've had no feedback or interaction. They did get some feedback initially, within the first month, is what Fire Marshal of Redmond said from the contractors about concerns about the cost increases due to that, but none from the public.
Okay, Debbie?
I'm concerned I'm about to show some real, either lack of math abilities or misunderstanding somewhere. And it goes to the point where Dan says that there's a net reduction in sprinklers. My understanding is that if you look at where we are today and where you're proposing to go, there will be a net increase in the number of residences with sprinklers. There's two models for determining this new community, which is the 8 to 12% of the new construction, and then the substantial remodels. So if you take that, the 8 to 12% of the new construction, and you add the substantial remodels, there's two ways to define what that pool of households would be. One is the historic assessed value. The second approach, which you're recommending, is this new model for assessing value. But either way, it's a net new set of homes that will have sprinklers versus where we are today.
Okay. I'm going to ask us to pause for a second. I think you hear the council is going to want to have a conversation about this, and I think you're going to need to put together options and data that show us some sense of what the implications of different options are. But what I want to get right now is, is the council ready to go forward with having them draft a revised ordinance that does this? And let's get to that, because I think the second question, I think we're not prepared to answer that right now, although there's clearly there's an appetite for it.
Can I clarify, the Public Safety Committee, is that a place where some of this could get vetted out?
Uh...
Yes, so...
Would you like to do that, that way? I mean, if that's your preference as to how this moves forward, that's...
We can certainly do so.
I would certainly respect that, but...
I know Chief Holmes and I were just talking today that we actually need to set up a Public Safety Committee meeting, and so...
That's police, fire, three of us, and some public people?
I don't think the public's, no.
It's three council members and then police and fire.
Yeah. So, okay, so let's ask the threshold question here, and any council member statements before I ask for thumbs up on go forward with this?
I mean, the only point to think about, Bruce, is unless I'm misreading the council, I think it's probably almost everyone in the council would support extending the new build to 100% of the new build. I think the only issue is the remodel. So if you may want to think at the risk of making this a longer bifurcating this, bringing a very simple ordinance on the new build, and then taking a little bit more time on the remodel to get that to the point of, if that's your goal. I mean, I'd hate to, I'd hate to have you hold up the new builds if we all agree that that's something we want to do, and then, and then for the remodel, it seems like the tail's wagging the dog there. So, I mean, if that makes sense. We can almost bring it up. The new build thing is a very simple change, I would think, Carrie and...
I think, I'm going to guess that you'd rather do this...
Take a look at that, just to see how that will play out, and then we'll also bring that data forward. I understand your point completely. One of the concerns is the substantial remodels, and even the remodels themselves, that's where one of the, you know, secondary items is, we want to simplify the process and make it, everybody knows coming in what it is that they're going to do. And so we may be able to combine those, but I don't disagree with that, but I'd like to have the opportunity to...
Okay. So I'm, I'm still looking for council support for moving this forward at this point rather than not. Any comments? Okay. So I'm going to see thumbs up, enough thumbs up to go forward, or you don't need more than that, right? Okay. Clearly, and if you're comfortable with the Public Safety Committee as a next stop for trying to vet this, that's, that sounds fine. Council, no objections to that, rather than have it come directly back to council. Okay, let's do that. Thank you both very much. Yes. Council, do you want a break before we go into...
Yes.
Okay. So 7:05 now. We'll come back at 7:10. Five-minute recess. Okay, so 7:05 now, we'll come back at 7:10, five-minute recess. All right. The meeting will return to order.
At least we're leaning left.
Good evening, this is our Tuesday, October 4, 2016 council meeting. We've completed a study session, we're moving now into the regular part of the meeting, it's time for appearances, a time when anybody may address the council on any issue they wish. General rules are please be civil, the complicated rules are on the back door, and I welcome anybody who would like to say something to the council. You have three minutes, begin by introducing yourself and giving us your address. Seeing, seeing... All right, seeing none, closed comments, thank you. We move to the consent calendar, we have payables, payroll, several sets of minutes, and Agenda Bill 5212, 2015 Water System Approvements Project Closeout. Is there a move to, motion to accept the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Anything to be pulled? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. I will take Chair's prerogative, just for a moment here, and say thank you, staff, Ron and I see you back there, this is very nice to see a project that comes in well under budget, as this did, and thank you very much to you and your team now, for your work on this. This is a great bit of news, I didn't wanna pull it out of the, out of the flow and actually have you forced to speak to it, but thank you very much. All right.
I can speak to it.
Yeah. All right, we'll move to regular business, we have Agenda Bill 5221, 2017, 2018, preliminary budget presentation and distribution. Looking around for Chip.
And this is a lot of drama in this process.
Yeah, fireworks, it's like the Seahawks running onto the field, kinda thing.
I'll take in on the debate.
I think Chip's been doing nothing but working on budget lately, so...
No public comment tonight?
There was no...
I was banking on the line. Okay.
Good job you're doing. Sorry to slow down.
Let me pull up the presentation here.
Okay, folks, sorry, it's been a scramble, trying to pull together the document, making last-minute changes tonight. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna go over the budget message, and I'll do it as quickly as I can. That includes sections on general fund deficits, YFS fund deficits, the other operating funding needs, which we talked about at your microplanning session, capital project funding challenges, what are the funding options for dealing with those operating and capital funding challenges, and what's the recommended path forward? And then we'll distribute to you your budget document. I had hoped when we talked at the mini-planning session back in June, that we'd be able to kinda do a council, a shrunken council version, and I just ran out of time to kinda pull that together, so you're getting the full meal deal tonight. I will mention this, you know, it's overwhelming to look at the whole document, and just focus on the budget message. There's two pieces, there's the message, which we're going over tonight, then there's, behind the message, there's an executive summary. It covers most of really what you need. And when you have additional questions, you can either ask me or my staff, or usually it'll point you to a section, maybe a budget policy, or something in the CIP section, or in the revenue sources section, and you get additional detail there. But if you just focus on the budget message, you're gonna get 90-plus percent, probably if not 95% of really what you need. As always, questions as we go along, and kinda so I can keep you guys awake, please. General fund deficits. What I wanna focus your attention on is the projected surpluses, and I have it in kind of two, two lines there. Before a transfer, meaning before a transfer from the rainy day fund, or what's called the contingency fund, and then after that transfer, you'll see that we can, but we can balance 17, and 17 is balanced by using some projected surplus from this year. It's all driven by, it's all construction sales tax, basically, and development fees, that we pull forward to help balance 17. And that's to the tune of a little over half a million dollars. The YFS fund also needs just shy of $200,000, so we would take some of that and transfer it from the general fund to the YFS fund, to square away that fund for 2017. 18, we've still got a problem, we're $800,000 shy, that's that .82 that you see on there, under the 2018 column, that would come from the rainy day fund to square it away, or that's, that's an option. That's the assumption that's made here, it's different than what we talked about at the microplanning session, but it just helps kind of, you know, it's, this is, this gives, I think, folks, not only you, but the residents, a chance to see we really are going at the deficits, and here's one of the ways to address it, is the rainy day fund. Now, an obvious question is, if you tap it for $800-plus thousand dollars, how much of the rainy day fund is that? That's a third, that's a third of the rainy day fund, which is 2 and 1/2, or, yeah, $2.5 Questions on that, just to kind of lay of the land here? Yes, sir?
Can you just restate, you mentioned it would tap in a third, but, you know, we've talked before about the rainy day fund, the contingency fund, and what's best practices, I mean, what cities should typically have, and I know, my recollection is that we're actually below what you thought, or think that we should have. Somehow 12% of the general fund is, comes to mind, but can you just elaborate a little
bit? Yeah, it's 10%, plus the $300,000 we have sitting in the general fund, taken together, it's 11-point-something percent, it's a little under 12%. The more typical practice, best practices, and there isn't an answer, there's a range of answers, we're at the lower end of the scale. Typically, our east side cities are in the 15, as high as 20% of general fund expenditures. I don't think we need to be that high, those cities are much more reliant on sales tax, that's why you want a bigger rainy day fund, we're much less reliant by comparison, though still reliant somewhat. And so, for me, I think 12% is a good number for us, we're not quite there, but I'm reasonably comfortable with where we're at.
Okay. So, Chip, if you could, just, I mean, I think it's, it's worth continuing this pause for a moment, to understand why this is here, and why it says rainy day fund, and what the alternative is, that, you know, is which we're obviously expecting us to have a much, we've had a lot of conversation about it, but we're expecting to have a lot more conversation about it.
And so, I will touch on that, as we kinda go through the presentation, as we kinda talk about what are the drivers of the deficits, as well as what are the options, including expenditure cuts, and what does that look like?
All right, I'll let you just go then, yeah.
Moving on, so, key observations here. When you look at property, sales, and utility tax, your taxes in the general fund together, that's not quite 3/4, just 73% of your total revenues and 70, that's a pretty typical percentage for us, we've been bumping around 72, 73% for a while. Then look at personnel costs, it's the same. Salaries and benefits, 72% or close. The point is in bold, to maintain current service levels on an ongoing basis, your taxes, your property, your sales, and utility, it needs to grow at the same rate as your personnel costs. There's a linkage there. This is a really common linkage in other cities, by the way, we're not the only one. This is really typical in Kirkland and Redmond, et cetera. I mean, I know it's not politically popular to say that, generally speaking, in the area, but that's my financial reality, is there's a linkage between the two. Yeah?
I'm just trying to understand the numbers on the general fund forecast, because it's just, it gets a little difficult, because you've got, in 2016, you've got one-time expenditures, which are included in the total expenditure, so you look at 2016, 2017, it looks like it's a minimal increase of only $90,000. But in fact, because, if you just, if you're just looking at actual day-to-day expenditure, I mean, not one-time expenditures, it's probably significantly more, it's gotta be significantly more than just $90,000, it's, because I think your one-time expenditures are like, over a half million dollars, I think, in 2016, for like the I-90 stuff, and...
What you'll, a couple things. And you'll notice in the budget message, the way I've drafted it, especially when I, you get to the executive summary section of it, is, I take that one-time stuff, and to be fair, I back it out, and then recalculate what's the percentage increase, and it is 3.9%, I believe. And you'll see that the percentage increases are 3.9% in 17, and 3.1% in 18. And so, yes, to back that's out, is out to be fair. And that, just so you know, when personnel costs make up again almost 3/4 of your, of your total general fund budget, if I can keep that overall increase below 4%, we're doing really, really well.
And I understand that. Did, so, for 2017, have we budgeted any one-time expenditures in there, or is there, there's no, the 2899, doesn't include, for example, anything for I-90, or anything like that, or how does that work?
Yeah, there, there's some one-time service packages that are in there, but what I did is, I just totaled revenues, less expenditures, including service packages, and whatever the difference was, is the plug to balance it, to make it work. Normally what I do is I accumulate one-time funding for one-time service packages, I didn't have that luxury in balancing the budget.
So is there anything in 2017, for example, for I-90?
Uh, no, there is not. And so, whatever is unspent would be carried over from 16 to 17.
Okay.
And, and also, because there is a surplus, which I did forget to talk about here, in 16, council, when we do the disposition of the year-end surplus, can take some portion of that, if you need more for I-90 negotiations, and appropriate accordingly.
But right now, you've got, you're assuming that 720,000 of the surplus will flow right to the top line in 2017?
Yep, and then 300,000 of it, the way, I have it, this $1.02 million projected surplus, again, driven by development activity, is all spoken for, except, I'll come back to the except, is all spoken for, for 17 and 18, the general fund, and for 17 for the YFS fund. I say except because it probably will be a little bit more than that, and, when we did the disposition of the 2015 year-end surplus, we set aside $400,000 for the general fund, just to keep things simple...
Let's pause. We're still on slide one, and it was very sporting of you to say, let's take questions along the way, but we've drilled, let's try and, I'm gonna ask, we hold questions for a little bit. How many slides do you have? Because I wanna make sure you get a good shot at, yeah, getting through them. Let's run aways here, before we try and drill, and we, Dan, I, don't worry, we'll be back to this, and you know that, but...
The short answer is, there's $400,000 that's available still from 2015 surplus, okay? Plus, whatever additional surplus beyond the 1 million I'm projecting.
Okay.
Okay, what are the drivers of the general fund deficits? First and foremost, it's this whole annual revenue growth versus annual expenditure growth. Annual revenues are not growing as fast as annual expenditures, there's about a 2.3, 2.4, somewhere in there, average annual differential to the expenditure side. And numbers, on average, in an, on average terms, from 18 to 23, that's almost $80,000 per year, that expenditures are growing faster than revenues. That's a structure, that's where you hear the term, structural imbalance, that's what it means. Property tax, for us, that's 42% of our total revenues in 17 and 18. For our brothers and sisters out there, Kirkland and Redmond and Issaquah and Bellevue, they're 19 to 23% in terms of property tax. Why? Retail sales tax, because it's a much bigger piece of their revenue pie. We're limited, just like they are, to 1% annual growth, plus new construction. What that does for us in particular is it puts an unrealistic burden for growth, revenue growth, on our other major revenues, sales tax, utility tax, development fees. Here's a graph you've seen before, it's, sorry, it's kinda hard to see. This is looking at your construction sales tax, they're in blue, versus your development fees in green. Remember back in '07 and '08, and the Great Recession took root, and really, in terms of financial terms for us, in the last quarter of 2008, '07 and '08 still was... and eight still was, there's a lot going on here, building activity-wise, right? But look at fifteen and sixteen, that's an absolute record-setting spike for us. Speaking of those development revenues, what I've, I'm estimating the spike to be in fifteen and sixteen, this isn't for the two-year period, this is an annual spike I'm referring to, is about nine-hundred thousand dollars in terms of construction sales tax, seven-hundred thousand dollars in terms of development fees, one-point-six million taken together. We are projecting, based on just current information, it's really hard to project development activity out beyond seventeen. It's hard doing seventeen, for that matter, but really hard beyond that. Is this forecast wrong? Of course it's wrong. The question is, and I'm projecting, when you look at those, that, and we're talking about the spike, the spike coming down over a three-year period, one-point-two-two million dollars, that's about three-quarters of the spike, okay? That doesn't mean we all of a sudden are having no activity, it just means the spike, we're coming back down towards a more normal level of activity over a three-year period of time is what I'm projecting. I wouldn't be surprised if the seventeen is too conservative, but would you, do you want to bank on it? That's the thing. And I would recommend that it would be wiser to be a little more conservative than to be too out there on the projection. Utility tax, fifteen percent of our revenue pie, it's only, it's hardly growing overall. And it's one percent is a projection for seventeen, a little over one percent in eighteen. Why? PSE, the electric gas utility tax, negatively impacted by double-digit natural gas rate decrease last year. Cellular continues to drop and drop, and double-digit dropping going on there since two thousand and nine, for the reasons I've already mentioned in the past. Personnel costs, we won't avoid that side of the ledger. Again, as I mentioned before, almost three-quarters of our total expenditures, they grow faster than inflation, that's typical. Salaries are up in seventeen, just point-three percent, and three-point-nine percent in eighteen. And the driver there is an unusual anomaly, where we had six retirements of general fund employees, and so they were replaced by newer employees who start at, start at the lower end of the salary scale. And it also reflects the elimination of the Eastside Narcotics Task Force detective position. Compensation policy is a reminder, as we pay all of our employees, the intent is the fiftieth percentile, the middle of the market. Benefits, up two-point-seven percent in seventeen and five-point-four, double in eighteen. Just a reminder that the employer's share of total medical, dental, and vision benefits, when Chris and I look at this and compare it to other cities, we've been the lowest in terms, and you can look at this from, whether it's the total premium cost for an employee only, or a family of four, or even the employer's share of that premium cost, we've been at the lowest for at least two decades, or one of the lowest. Shoreline finally came down to us, and we're like, we keep changing who's the lowest. It's really, really close. Cost drivers on wages, of course, are cost of living adjustments, your COLAs, your step increases, periodic adjustments, we have paid-for performance for our unrepresented All that begs two questions, and Dan's asked them before, and they're great questions. One, and it's looking backward, given the underlying structural imbalance we've just talked about, in terms of revenue growth versus expenditure growth, how did the city balance the budget over the last four years? First and foremost, development activity, that's really what's made the difference, the biggest difference. We also made expenditure reductions in thirteen, fourteen budgets. The council approved a new utility tax beginning in thirteen, bumped it up a little bit in fourteen. You've also taken one percent property tax increases for four years. I had to use some one-time money, not quite eight-hundred thousand dollars, to balance the budgets in thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and sixteen. Low inflation has helped on the expenditure side, keeping wage growth low, and our medical premiums and dental insurance premiums have been very, very modest over the last four or five years. That's also really, really helped. Question two, looking forward, how can the city's general fund go from a one-point-two million, or one-point-oh-two million projected surplus this year to a one-point-one-three million projected deficit, a two-point-one-five million swing? It just doesn't seem possible. Again, look at one-time funding of four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand and five-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand that's required to balance the sixteen and seventeen budgets. That's almost a million dollars, that's just one-time funding that just goes away. Projected decline in development fees and construction sales tax, taken together, almost another million dollars. True, it's another projection, but that accounts for two million of your two-point-one-five million. The difference there relates to property tax and utility tax, their growth lagging personnel cost growth. That's how I count for the difference. YFS fund deficits. Again, as a reminder, we have seventeen balanced, just see the zero there under the seventeen column, by transferring a hundred-and-ninety, two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars of general fund surplus to the YFS fund and square it away in seventeen. And then in eighteen, you would need three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars from the rainy day fund. When you take into account the amount needed for the general fund and the rainy day, and the YFS fund in eighteen, that's almost half of your contingency fund balance. So, of the two-point-five million, we would need one-point-two million and change to square away eighteen. I mention that because you never know when the next recession's going to happen, and the thing that makes me nervous, that would, I hope, give you pause, is that puts us potentially in a precarious position if another recession were to take root. And I'm also very protective of our credit rating, and the rainy day fund's there for a good reason, but you also want to be really prudent about when you tap that, and so that could potentially affect, negatively affect our credit rating. Primary drivers, we've mentioned this before, I'll zip through it. Not poking, not picking on the school district, just a fact, they had to reduce their annual support from about forty-two percent of the total cost for the school counselors to fix some of sixty thousand back in two thousand and ten, because like us, they also were struggling during the Great Recession, they had their own financial challenges. Just to give you a little perspective, in seventeen, the projected cost for school counselors is six-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand dollars. The city would pay for ninety percent of that, the district the remaining ten percent are sixty thousand. Also, to be fair, during the recession, I had to reduce general fund support to the YFS fund from four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars a year, it had been that for a while through twenty, through two thousand and nine, and I took it down eventually to two-thousand, two-hundred thousand dollars in fourteen, a huge drop. What we were doing is I was, I was riding the double-digit sales growth wave for the thrift shop, and then it plateaued in thirteen and fourteen. We increased that back up to four-hundred thousand dollars beginning in fifteen, and it's also in place, not only for sixteen, but seventeen and eighteen going forward. Thrift shop sales, sixty percent of YFS fund total revenues in seventeen and eighteen. The good news, and I mentioned this to you, I believe, at the microplanning session, is it's, we're doing this staffing experiment, where we convert work, study hours to part-time positions, and took one of those part-time positions and made it a full-time position using MIYFS foundation support. And that's, we are up, it's a little over ten percent right now, and so the projection for the end of the year is eight to ten percent up in sixteen versus fifteen. That's the good news. And yes, oh, by the way, that's, while that's a gross sales number, when you back out the expenditures, net income is still up. That's the bottom line for me. The new school counselor, the council-directed staff, two years ago, when we were doing the fifteen, sixteen budget, add a fourth elementary school counselor, and so we did. That's a hundred percent on the city in the YFS fund. That's also contributing to the deficits in the fund. Other operating funding needs. Fire apparatus replacement, that's our fire trucks, our maxi and midi pumpers, and our fire rescue truck. That's only funded through two thousand and twenty-six, and to square it away, we would need to add fifty-five thousand dollars of new funding that would grow one percent a year, and that would buy us another ten years through two thousand and thirty-six. Why isn't it working now? It's because part of the funding model the council approved back in two thousand and seven relied heavily on investment interest. That has sucked, to use a technical term, since two thousand and nine, and our returns have been below one percent. And that's why I'm struggling to make, meet the annual funding target. I can't meet it with those kind of returns. Communication specialist, halftime FTE, I don't like doing part-time FTEs, it's not ideal, but we always think lean and skinny. And so, this is driven by just our experience with major meaty issues. I mean, you think about the library model, you think about the siting of MICA, you think about I-90, the COVALL plat, et cetera, there's been just one thing after another, right? In fourteen through sixteen, and looking forward, not only have these deficits we'll be talking about with the public, but you also have the DSG work plan in seventeen and eighteen, lots of meaty stuff there. It appears to be an ongoing trend, and that's why it's listed there. Youth development coordinator, this was cut from full-time to halftime back in two thousand and eleven because of the Great Recession. Restoring this halftime cut would expand voice during the school year, so it's not just a summer program. Also, would involve coordinating community-wide substance abuse prevention, healthy youth initiative program. So, those are the three, there's other operating needs, but these are the three kind of biggies we hung our hats on. Next, I'm going to move us into capital project funding challenges. Street fund, and we're just going to look at fund balances here. And so, look what's in Boulder, the available ending fund balance, so it goes negative beginning in two thousand and twenty, not too, not too bad, but once you get to six-hundred thousand dollars and change in two thousand and twenty-two, that's concerning. What are the drivers? Well, I've mentioned this to the council before when we've done the TIP, and even back when we did the CIP kickoff, the southeast Fortieth Street corridor, which project, which we've been talking about, and it's been evolving and changing, that was not on our radar until two years ago, if you don't remember. It sort of came out of the blue, and all of a sudden, we had to put this million-dollar-plus project into our CIP. That really pinched us. And while we're not pinched right now in seventeen, it does impact ultimately the six-year period. As you look out further, Gallagher Hill Road, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two, that's a pinch point as well. Also, not to be disregarded, just look around, cranes all over the place, the high level of development activity in this region has created an unfavorable bid climate, it is what it is. We're not getting the killer bids we used to get. Also, I want to call out that there are unfunded pedestrian bicycle facility projects in the CIP, to the tune of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, and we always try to put those on your radar. Moving to the capital improvement fund, these numbers are in thousands, the, this is not really an issue. Anytime you are negative one-hundred-and-fifty, that's not a big deal, because there are, there's working capital or reserves in this particular fund that can absorb temporary deficits, as long as we come back up. So, you'll see in two thousand and twenty-two, we're back up to seventy-six thousand dollars, not a concern, it's fine. I don't like to go negative, but it's just a temporary gig. What I do want to call out are examples of partially funded and unfunded projects which are in the CIP. And what I've noted are, and this is in the CIP section of the budget document you'll be getting tonight, what are the unfunded amounts of all these various projects? And it totals almost five-point-eight million dollars. In other words, we're relying on grants and/or private contributions to make those work in most cases, and they don't always come through. Also, just just a sample listing to give you a feel and a flavor, which we did at the microplanning session, or what are some of the unfunded projects which are not even in the CIP? This is just showing you parks projects, there's also some facilities ones. So, there's three-point-seven million dollars in various projects, combination of field upgrades, Groveland Beach stuff, trails, skate park redevelopment, Luther Burbank Park The biggest capital funding need, in staff's opinion, is the Maintenance Center renovation expansion project. This houses our public works and parks maintenance folks, that's almost forty-five employees, plus seventeen seasonals, the very, very preliminary cost estimate's three-point-nine million. The design phase of the project is planned for two thousand and seventeen, this will give us a much better cost estimate next year. So, what are the funding options for operating in capital? Let's focus on operating first. This takes into account your general fund deficit, all the things that you've, we've just, I showed you previously, and at the microplanning session, for the six-year period. What you, I want you to kind of notice is, as you focus on eighteen, the one-point-three-seven million, it just starts increasing significantly. You see nine-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, eight-hundred-thousand, et cetera. So, pretty significant growth rates. Again, when you're talking about, call over that period of time, the average, the general fund is about thirty-some-odd million, you know, three percent would be nine-hundred-thousand dollars. So, that's your differential. So, two, we're just going to look at two bookend options, there's more than two options, but just to kind of bookend, how can you address or balance the budget? Let's first look at expenditure cuts. Again, we did this at the microplanning session, this is kind of more for the general public's benefit. When you look at it, okay, in terms of dollars, how much do we have to cut? They're the dollars, starting at one-point-three-eight, eight million, and then it becomes additive thereafter, an additional million, et cetera. In percentage terms, it's a four-point-two percent cut in eighteen, plus an additional two-point-nine in nineteen, so on. In terms of employees, it's thirteen employees in eighteen, add them all up, that's fifty-three employees. That's over a quarter of our workforce, we have two-hundred-and-four employees, if you try to do it on the expenditure side. One thing I like to always share with people is a staffing ratio. Looks like, you look at your headcount relative to your population. So, I've taken our east side cities, and you'll see Redmond, this is a longstanding, this has been going on for as long as I can remember, they have the highest number of employees per thousand population, it's always been that way. I also back out social services, we're the only city, except for Seattle, that has a department of social services, youth and family services. Bellevue and others have one or two, a few employees, but not a whole department like we do. So, to kind of get them more apples to apples, I back them out. So, you'll see, okay, we're right in the middle of the group, but things to take into consideration are Issaquah doesn't have a fire department. You had three-plus firefighters, their ratio goes up over eight, eight to nine. Kirkland, I spent ten years there, I know that city well. For years, we were lower, our staffing ratio was lower than Kirkland and Issaquah. The difference is they chose to do a major annexation, adding thirty-one thousand people, that took effect in the Great Recession. And so, they weren't able to staff up, they were constrained in their staffing up. They will be staffing up for a number of years, at some point, they will pass us in terms of the staffing ratio. Let's look at option two. What if you do a levy-lid lift? And I have two structure options, which I've shown the council before, but this has been adjusted a little bit, assuming that we use all of our surplus in sixteen to effectively buy down, address the deficits as much as possible, and that helps buy down the levy-lid lift. I just want to focus your attention, and this option is a smoothed one with a five-percent annual increase, assumes a six-year levy-lid lift beginning in eighteen. So, you'll see that if you include the two halftime positions, it's three-hundred-and-one dollars. That's five dollars less than what I showed you on Friday. And then it bumps up by five percent thereafter. The average annual amount's three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, four dollars less than what I showed you on Friday. If you exclude the positions, that buys you, you know, nine, ten dollars or so, in terms of savings, takes it down to under three-hundred or two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars in two thousand and eighteen. The other option, what if you just peanut butter the whole thing and average, keep it fixed annually? So, it becomes three-hundred-and-forty-two, of course, with the positions, or excluding positions, three-hundred-and-thirty-one is your average across that six-year period. Capital funding options, there's three. Make more project cuts, so as an example, if we wanted to, for the street fund, remember we had that six-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar negative number out in two thousand and twenty-two, if you wanted to address that, our policy says, look at your capital facility projects first, that's your new stuff, not your capital reinvestment projects, your capital facility, new infrastructure. That would be PBF projects, which you guys love, the community loves, but that, that's our policy. Because I'm okay with dipping, you know, about no more than one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the red temporarily, that means you have to cut five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars of PBF projects. Option two, increase the vehicle license fee, a ten-dollar increase beginning in nineteen, right now it's twenty dollars per vehicle, would square away the street fund completely. If you wanted to also fix the capital improvement fund, you could do a twenty-dollar increase in nineteen, and you're thinking, okay, hold on, I can't use vehicle license fees for the capital improvement fund, and you're right. What that does is allows you to free up one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of REIT a year in the street fund and move it over to the capital improvement fund, and that squares away the capital improvement fund. I personally like that option. Or, there's the capital levy-lid lift, and the metric I've shown you in the past is nine million dollars in projects, this is a nine-year levy-lid lift, and if you limit it to a hundred dollars a year on a million-dollar home on Mercer Island, that buys you nine million dollars in capital projects. Almost there. Recommended path forward. First of all, kind of underpinning these recommendations is a recognition that island residents expect good value for the taxes they pay to the city. That is really clear in the citizen surveys we've done over the years, as long as I've been here. been here. Also assumes that island residents, they want to maintain current service levels. That's also based on the results of those citizen surveys. And this is a little newer, but this is just through your eyes and our own eyes, it reflects a perceived desire in the community to accelerate our planned pace of park and PBF and perhaps other capital improvements on the island. Hence the consideration of a capital levy lid lift. As I mentioned to you on Friday, sorry, on Friday, the recommendation is to engage the public, initiate a public engagement process. This isn't saying we're doing a levy lid lift, it is engaging them, having a conversation, educating, including a lot of the information that's in this presentation right here, and then taking a ton of questions and answering about, you know, why not this, why not this, or why not that? But do that in February through April of seventeen on the city's operating funding needs, and then also recommending initiating a separate, parallel public engagement process for the city's capital funding challenges, and utilizing a stakeholder, a community stakeholder group. Perspective information. I always find this really useful, and I hope you do too. I've shared this with you before. What I like to do with property taxes is look, this is the sixteen, two thousand sixteen property tax levy breakdown for Mercer Island residents. This is for a million-dollar home, I should mention that. So you'll see, for a million-dollar home, that individual's paying eight thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars in property taxes. That's the total property tax bill, and that, all the pieces, you know, rank from highest to lowest. The school district, because they're heavily reliant on property tax, you know, gets almost thirty percent of your total annual levy. State School Fund gets twenty-six percent. Add it up together, that's almost fifty-six percent, over half of your taxes go to schools. Look at King County, higher than Mercer Island, higher than Mercer Island, higher than Mercer Island. Fourteen percent is how much of your levy goes to the city. So for, sorry, as you can tell, I feel strongly about that, because when you think about, I can point to the services you get for that money, King County becomes a little harder. What, you're paying more to them, and it becomes a little more challenging. Oh, I went there. So, people, most people I come in contact with have no idea, when you get your property tax bill, because it's not all split out all neatly in percentage terms and whatnot, this is what you're paying, is fourteen percent of your bill goes to the city. Next, and even more interesting, let's, oh, I didn't get a chance to finish it, I was scrambling, that's why I was running, running late. Look at property tax levy rates. So eighteen cities in King County that are, have a population of twenty thousand or more. Bellevue has the lowest, they've had the lowest property tax rates as long as I can remember. We have the second lowest, okay? Why is Bellevue's the lowest? Because of their huge retail sales tax base. For years, they didn't take the one percent increase, they were financially in a position to have, to not take that increase. They broke that streak back in fifteen and actually used some bank capacity, and took one percent as well. The, look at Federal Way, Maple Valley, and Issaquah, three, four, and five on the list. Guess what they don't have? They don't have a fire department. Now, to be fair, to be fair, and by the way, you get down to Renton, Seattle, Sea-Tac, you get, you know, in the high twos, three bucks, it's, I can't.
Chip, I have this vision of you knowing what those numbers are in those boxes, but test their blanks, so.
Could you?
Yeah, just, if you could.
Sorry. It's, it's in your budget message, which we'll be getting shortly.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, but what we should take away from this is, is the numbering order, the sequence, the aligned with?
From lowest to highest.
Okay.
Lowest to highest.
Okay, very good.
Okay. To be fair, your property tax rates are driven by your assessed values, in particular assessed value per square mile. We have the highest assessed value per square mile, that's why our rates, because your levy is the product of assessed value, okay, times your rate equals the levy. And so because your levy amount can only increase by one percent a year, if your assessed value goes up ten percent, your rate has to come down to keep that levy amount at just one percent. Follow that math with my hands? Okay, the point is, our assessed value is high, that's really why our rate is low, but it's still really good. We can take some credit for it. Okay, I need to do some recognition before, as we hand out the budget documents to you. This has been a grueling budget process for myself and for my staff and for the organization, but especially for us, and it feels a lot more grueling this time around than previous sessions. I want to recognize Luanne, hand up, and Francie, who, that you have no idea, there's a lot that goes, most of the pages in the budget document have Luanne's fingerprints on it, she's responsible for most of the document. Francie's responsible for the CIP section and all the utility stuff, also meaty sections. Ally is always there as a safety net, helping us with this and that, editing, helping with, printing on this past Saturday with Luanne, cranking out the document on the copier. Deborah Alexander in Parks, our senior admin assistant, is responsible for your budget cover, the puzzle pieces. I was scrambling on the budget message. With that, questions, and before I take questions, as a reminder, we'll be getting into the review of the budget October seventeenth, that's the operating budget review, and it's at a fund level, focused at our, our major funds, general fund, criminal justice fund, beautification fund, YFS fund, and would kind of keep you at a kind of thirty thousand, eh, more like ten thousand foot level. But also we'll focus on service package requests there, we'll look at the big drivers up and down for each fund, any policy changes. And then, on the first meeting in November, which I believe is the seventh, that'll be the CIP review. Okay, so we break this into two major reviews. This, October seventeenth, operating budget, November seventh, the CIP review. I've offered to our newer council members, to Wendy, to Jeff, and to Dave, to meet with them offline in advance of these two upcoming council meetings, to kind of get them up to speed, you know, for each of those meetings, because again, the document can be overwhelming. With that, I'm going to invite Francie and Luanne to hand out the budget documents. Were we able to replace that?
Yep.
Excellent. And while they're doing that, questions, high-level questions, not-so-high-level questions?
Wendy?
Chip, thank you, awesome. I'm looking forward to getting through that in the next, I don't know how much time. But in January, you brought out a chart that showed property taxes by month relative to utility bills and cell phone bills. It was a really remarkable chart, just to kind of show how much the city gets relative to other bills.
I ran out of time to add that slide, it's in your budget message.
It's in here, awesome.
It's on page twenty, page twenty, I believe.
Page twenty, of course you know the page number.
And so, yeah, what, and just so you know, what my, that attempt is, and it's described in the budget message, and I, sorry I ran out of time to put a slide together. The stuff that we do, whether it's my quarterly financials, financial status reports, or the annual report Luanne does, it doesn't resonate with typical residents, right? And sometimes I think I struggle to resonate with the council. And so one of the fun challenges of, of, I've, I've, I've struggled with is if the financial information we present to you is mostly from an organizational perspective, how can we put something together that's from a household or customer perspective? So what I did, and what I've done over the years, and the council's seen this before and updated it for two thousand sixteen, is I say, let's look at all the taxes that you guys pay that comes to the city, not the school district, not the state, not the county, so that includes your property, your sales, your utility tax, a little bit of your gas tax even, even your King County EMS levy, all the pieces that come just to the city, and add them all up, and the monthly average for a family of four, a million-dollar homeowner, is a hundred and seventy dollars a month of total taxes that paid, come to the city. And you'll see a page in there that says, okay, so what do you get for those taxes? And I give you a list, from twenty-four-seven police, fire, EMS, to park maintenance, to street maintenance, to so on and so forth. And then it's up to you to decide, does that seem like good value? And I compare it to three utility bills that you do know what you get, Comcast, PSE, and Verizon, and I show you those monthly amounts, and they're higher than a hundred and seventy dollars. And, and it's just meant to kind of give you something that most people can relate to without having to be an accountant, or some financial wizard, and kind of help you weigh, is that good value? I also included the, the city utility bill, which is actually bimonthly, but converted to a monthly basis, and that's a hundred and fifty-two dollars a month. And so you can use that in comparison to Verizon, Comcast, and, and PSE, to help you, again, assess, am I getting good value? Because that's, if I have a bias, if I have a, an agenda, if you will, it's, I want to, I want to deliver good value, whether it's on the utility rates or taxes, that's the way I've come up with, to kind of communicate that to your typical resident on Mercer Island, without, you know, being an accountant. Other questions?
Dan?
I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I, a couple of things, when you come back and, and, on the construction sales tax, it would be interesting to me to understand the, the split between residential, single-family residential and commercial, or multifamily. I mean, your, your concern that you've, and it's a, it's a very valid concern, is that what's going to happen in town center, and are we going to continue to get projects like we've, like Hadley and stuff like that? And I don't know the answer to that, and, but I, my sense is that the single-family is still picking up, at least at first tells any indication.
It's still really strong, yeah.
And, and so I'd just like to understand how much of that two hundred thousand dollars is, is, you know, just if you could show some trends and what's going on in single-family, and just, and how that two hundred thousand is between commercial and residential, and some, that would, that would be helpful to me.
I'll see if I can divvy it up. You'll see in the executive summary at the back of the budget message, I've included development stats, such as valuation, permits, broken down, et cetera, which can also give you a feel.
Okay. And the second question, I've, I've always lived with the understanding, and, and I know it's a timing issue, but it's still a basic understanding, that development fees and development costs track each other. So in other words, you know, you've, you've told us many times, we can't take in more in development fees than we spend on, on development, on the cost of processing the permits. So when I see large, when I see the concern being that development fees are going to drop a half million dollars, the immediate reaction is, well, that means expenses have to drop a half million dollars, or somehow we're out of alignment again. And, and I know it's a timing problem, but I, I guess, I'd, I'd want to understand why that is, is not happening, that why aren't we seeing a corresponding drop in expenses based upon the idea that, under state law, development fees cannot exceed development expenses? So that's, so that, that's, again, a question, I, I'm not asking you to answer it now.
And it's in the budget message, and, just so you know. And so, and it's written, and the quick answer is, in fifteen, and it looks like in sixteen, I have to be careful, but it looks like development fees are higher than costs. Why? We didn't staff up. You talk to Scott, he would have liked more staff in fifteen, sixteen, there's still, our permit turnaround times have dropped.
Right.
Okay? And so while we have the spike coming down, there still is a lot, a significant amount of work, and they want to keep their staffing for two more, contract staff for two more years. And we do get a bunch of fees upfront, which within carryover, they actually get, I can't think of the word, Luanne, thank you, just tired, deferred accounting terminology, and to the, and recognizes revenue in the following year. We collect fees upfront, the work occurs, and we recognize the revenues, the work occurs. And so there is some of that to be taken into consideration, that we'll be, have all this money we've collected, which we'll be deferring into next year.
Right, but that would, that would give you more revenues in, in the following year, so that would actually, should help us from a cash flow standpoint.
Yes.
If you don't recognize it till later.
Like I said, my, I suspect, I'm not willing to bank on or bet on it, but I suspect our seventeen projections are conservative.
Because I, I remember when we, when you, when you came to us with Scott on the, the last increase in development fees, and the model was, and the, the outside consultant made their presentation, that was an issue. I didn't remember it being anywhere close to five hundred thousand, but I remember there was a delta between the, the fee revenue and, and the cost.
Right.
But I, it seems like five hundred thousand is a, it's much higher than.
It is.
What we were talking about, that, so again, so, because that, you know, what you did, and it's, it's a great presentation, because it really highlights the issues, but you've got that, I think it's five hundred sixty-eight thousand development fees and two hundred thousand in, in construction sales tax, which is basically driving ninety percent of the problem. And so I, I think it's important, at least it'll be important to me to understand where those numbers are coming from, and, and why we can't, you know, on the two hundred thousand, the residential, commercial issue, and on the, on the permit fees, why we can't bring expenses more under control, to, to, control is the wrong word.
Yep.
Why we don't get them back in balance.
Plan on it on October seventeenth.
The, the last thing I, I wanted to mention, you and I've had a discussion before about code compliance, and I know that there's, the question I, I guess is, I think you were going to look at with the city attorney's office as to whether we can possibly cover code compliance related specifically to construction out of development fees. I know you, there is an issue that if it's code compliance, in general, you can't cover that out of development fees, but code compliance as to construction, there is an issue as to whether we could cover that out of development fees, and then, I don't know whether that was resolved one way or the other.
Yeah, I haven't followed up, I can't remember if I talked to Carrie or not. I did talk to Scott.
You know, I haven't had a chance to specifically research that. I can look into that and follow up.
Yeah, because I, I, I mean, there, there's been concerns expressed in the community, and, and I, I share some of them, as to whether we have enough staffing to do the type of co-compliance, particularly on, on, on the land use side. I, I have no doubt that Don and his staff are doing a great job on, on the building side, but on the land use side, that's all falls on Jimmy's back, and, and she's got a million other things that she's working on, so the concern.
And she's also halftime.
Yeah. So the, the concern is whether, you know, what, one of the issues I'd like to tee up in front of the council when we get to the budget, is whether we need to do something to address that, and part of the question then becomes, there's some emails going back and forth that you, you had generated actually, about whether you can cover that out of fees, and, and I just don't know where it came out, so.
Yeah, it's just on my back burner, but, but I'll follow up.
That'd be great, appreciate it.
Other questions? I'll point out, it's obvious, maybe doesn't even bear saying, but council members, your budget book, bring it to your next few meetings, and as there are changes, you'll get new pages, so it's going to be a living document for us over the next few meetings, and, and you'll be hearing it everywhere you go. Debbie?
Yeah, minor question, following up from Friday's conversation. We, we raised the question and/or issue of how much debt the city would be retiring in terms of the debt outstanding on the communities, and I think both the land and the, and the building. Would that at all impact the budget documents as well as we bring that information forward?
It would impact, not the operating budget, it, I can't remember when things get retired, but it could be helpful in terms of capital funding in the future.
Some of the projections, okay, thanks.
Anything else right now? Chip, anything else from you at this point on this?
I don't think so.
Okay? Thank you very much.
You bet.
That was a great presentation, and more to come, obviously. All right, I'm going to keep going, we're going to move to Agenda, Agenda Bill Five, two-twos zero, Crown Castle Small Cell Franchise Follow-Up. Christina?
We're here tonight for the Small Cell Franchise Agreement, Part One, we're calling it. This is a little bit of a follow-up to our study session from last, last council meeting. So here's how we've kind of structured tonight, I kind of think of it as a working agenda item. So first, I will give you a brief presentation, just a framework for the franchise agreement, things to consider. Crown Castle is going to follow up on some questions that were asked during the study session, also give you a brief presentation. And then we're going to be asking, staff is going to be asking you for some policy direction to guide the franchise agreement. And just to keep in, to keep in mind, there, there're just, there're three main areas we're asking for input on, and so I'll give you a heads up, and you can kind of look for them during the presentations, and then we'll be asking you, guiding you through these policy So first, as a reminder, we're here because Crown Castle has applied to install two small cell networks, which consist of thirty-nine small cell nodes on PSE poles in the right-of-way throughout the city. These are, these small cells are proposed to fill a significant gap in their client T-Mobile service. Small cells are not cell towers, we're not talking about macro, macro towers, and just so we're all on the same page, the franchise agreement is the tool that allows telecommunications companies to, or, and other. Telecommunications Act of 1996, which I think is the most important to keep in mind, sort of this construct for the cities, we're not allowed to prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless service. And then state law, ESSB 6676, passed in 2000 in response to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, allowed cities to use franchise agreements, to let telecommunications use right-of-way. But they said specifically, we can't charge a franchise fee, and we can -- but we can recover administrative costs. That's something to keep in mind, that's we're not flexible on in the franchise agreement. We're constrained by state law on that. And so what we're looking at tonight is to get started on drafting this franchise agreement to bring back to you for first reading. And again, what this franchise agreement will do is grant the authority to use a right-of-way, and with the terms, will allow the city to manage this use. We're hoping that it will set some design and location standards. It will effectively permit and approve the current applications if they meet whatever design and location standards you put in place. And then we are going to -- and then it will set the approval process for additional small cells. So in that list, you'll see our three policy pieces we're asking for guidance on, and that is design and location standards and approval process for additional small cells. So I'm going to stop here and turn it over to Crown Castle for a brief presentation.
Good evening. My name is Dan Schweitzer. I'm the Government Relations Director for Crown Castle for the West Region, and with me is Jason Sears. So we were here just a couple of short weeks ago. I really want to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing us to come before you. Continued thanks to city staff for working with us and what's been, you know, they're showing a lot of patience with us, and we really appreciate that. So I realize that the last time that we were here, that we left a lot of information and probably left the council members with a certain amount of questions, so I thought this might be a good opportunity to answer some of those questions. Also, we've got a presentation that we've put together that gets to the heart of some of the questions that were asked. Okay, next slide. Does a -- is there audio for this? I was just going to play a short video that encapsulates kind of what Crown Castle, what we do.
Infrastructure is part of what makes our country great. Before interstate travel became accessible, someone had to build a railroad, highways, and airports. Every major technological and cultural transformation is made possible by infrastructure that supports it. That's certainly the case with wireless technology. If you use a cellphone, a smartphone, or a tablet, you depend on wireless infrastructure. There's no doubt that we use our phones differently than we did even 10 years ago. In fact, we hardly use them as phones at all anymore. We stream video, load webpages, and use apps. All that extra data is like cars crowding onto a busy highway. To relieve traffic congestion, we add more lanes. And to make room for all that extra data we're consuming, we need to expand and add wireless infrastructure. But when we talk about wireless infrastructure, what do we mean? Let's start with the one you probably already know: towers. Just like the other infrastructure you see all around you, you'll see cell towers in fields, on the side of the road, maybe somewhere near your neighborhood. Wireless carriers place antennas on these towers to provide voice and data services over a designated geographic area. In urban landscapes, we use rooftops to effectively turn buildings into cell towers. In densely populated areas, or places where towers or rooftop antennas aren't feasible, we turn to innovative new technologies like small cells. Small cell solutions consist of a central hub with several nodes that are connected by fiber optic cable and strategically placed on utility poles, streetlights, or signs. They can even be used indoors in places like large venues or sports arenas. We have towers, rooftops, and small cells. So which one do you use? The answer likely is all of them. Together, they help us increase capacity and meet the demands of today's data-hungry consumer. So no matter where your world takes you, you'll be able to connect uninterrupted. It says to make a right -- oh, look, there it is. We're Crown Castle, the foundation for a wireless world.
So I thought that video does certainly a better job than I could explaining exactly what it is that small cells do, but the important thing to remember is that it's just an integration into the current wireless system to improve really with the -- to meet the needs, which is really related mostly to data. So as the last time we were here, we talked about a couple of policy considerations, and one of them being, you know, what kind of design is preferred by the city. So what I have here is a couple of examples of the typical designs that we would see when working with Puget Sound Energy. The first one is a pole top, and if you have any technical questions as we go, I encourage you or invite you to ask any questions if they're technical in nature. Jason B. can answer them much better than I can. But the first one here is the pole top. You can see the antenna actually sits above power and the equipment is on the pole. And the next one would be what we call the communications zone. Instead of placing the antenna above the primary power, the antennas actually go within the area of the pole that's designated for communications equipment. So it's a little lower profile. This one would be a pole replacement, so if the pole doesn't meet certain technical specifications or height requirements, the pole can be swapped out and replaced with a pole that does. So it would grow the height of the pole if that's the preferred solution, again with the equipment on the pole.
Did you -- the previous slide, so at what point does a pole have to be replaced because the height requirement?
So there's certain clearance requirements that are required for code specification and safety. The antennas need a certain amount of height, but that wouldn't necessarily drive a pole replacement. We would probably select a different pole. But if the pole itself isn't capable of supporting the system, or where the specific clearance requirements for electric safety can't be made, then a pole replacement would be the ideal solution.
And in this instance, this is what is called a guide pole.
If you could just step to the mic so that we capture that. All right, Jason Sears here.
So in this particular instance, this is a guide pole. So you notice there's not any electrical facilities on it right now. There's no transmission or distribution. There's not a transformer. So this is used to provide structural support to the pole line. When we select our poles, we obviously look at a lot of criteria. They're highly engineered, believe it or not, and you go to a lot -- great lengths to make this network work seamlessly together. But we also look to cite the poles in the most pleasing locations. So we try to pick poles that will not impact the community greatly. So this is an example of that. So this is a guide pole. That's why you see a greater extension on this than you would just a standard transmission pole or a distribution pole.
Would you like questions now, or would you like to get through your presentation and take questions after?
We can do either. I have just a few more slides if we want to get through and look at all the design options, and then I'm happy to come back and address any questions.
Okay, well, let's do that then.
Okay. So this is a wooden light pole, and there's -- I think the main takeaway from the different options that we're showing you is that we have a lot of flexibility. There's a lot of different ways that we can mount the equipment to the pole. And it's really up to -- it varies jurisdiction by jurisdiction on what the preferred concept is, but this is a concept that's fairly common. And then this one was more, I think Jason wanted to include this to show more about the anatomy of the pole and kind of what's at play here and exactly what's going on in the pole. And he spoke about the amount of engineering that goes to each location. There is a lot of thought and process that goes into it, and we can, you know, we could dive deeper into the specifications on the right if the council desires. And, you know, this is a completely different option than the others that you've seen before because this would be considered a multi-tenant design. And so I think the policy, one of the main policy drivers from, I think this council could give guidance for us, is whether they prefer to have a single-tenant solution and when, if there is another wireless customer that wanted to co-locate on the fiber network, whether that customer should go to the next feasible pole over, or whether the council and the city would rather have a multi-customer solution. And you see in this one, the upper arrow is actually two sets of antennas. It's actually functioning for two separate customer, you know, T-Mobile and Verizon could co-locate on the same pole as an example. The drawback is that they're -- it's larger. The pro is that there's fewer sites, so I think it's really just driven by jurisdiction. I can't say that I've seen cities have a strong preference for one or the other, but it's really just something that each jurisdiction has to kind of decide on their own. We're somewhat agnostic on co-locating versus not. It really doesn't matter to us. The fiber, which is really not the visible part of this network, is really what's doing most of the work. It's the antennas that get a lot of attention, but so long as it's on the fiber ring and it meets the general area requirements for the customer, we're pretty agnostic on whether the co-location or standalone. Okay. So at the last council meeting, it was decided this map was a little hard to see, so we broke it down into two sections for the two different polygons that we're looking to serve. Go ahead. So the northern sites, this would be the -- this is the proposed 39 application site in front of the city right now. Hopefully, that's a little bit clearer. And then this would serve the southern sites. So as Christina mentioned in her presentation, in addition to sort of design concepts, multi-tenant versus single-tenant, the other question that really needs to be hashed out in the agreement is what does the council prefer for a preferred process going forward? You know, we've seen, there's lots of options, there's different ways to do it, you know, and we're happy to discuss any of those options that the council may want to address at this session, but if we wanted to start, Mr. Mayor, with your questions about design concepts, and then we can move into process if that works.
Okay. Well, council will take the questions as they come here, based on what you've shown us so far, and go where that takes us.
Okay.
And then figure out where we need to go from there in terms of getting back to the core questions that are being asked here. So let's see, Benson and Debbie, I think, had questions. I don't recall who was up first, but.
Of the different proposed locations that you have, do any of those include pole replacement?
Yes, as a matter of fact, a number of them will require poles to be replaced.
And so would I therefore assume that if you're replacing the poles, you're actually increasing the height?
Not always, but I'd say probably in about 60% of these, the height will increase slightly.
So how many then of the total 39 would be pole replacement? And then how many of those would be height increases?
About 80% would be pole replacements.
80?
80, yes. There's a lot of pole replacements in.
And so each of those equally would then be a height increase?
Depending on if it's, again, back to the design, if it's located in the restricted space or the electrical supply space, then it would be below primary and would not require a taller pole per se. Now, sometimes, depending on the number of attachments already on the pole, they may have to replace the pole for a number of reasons. One, structural, age, or just to accommodate additional fiber, so are the antennas. So it's not just strictly an extension to get the antennas above primary. There's a number of reasons why a pole might have to be replaced.
So how would we know then how many of these new poles would then be higher poles?
The construction drawings that we've submitted to the city, I'll break that down. If you guys would like, we can provide a table that gives you a clear understanding of which poles are impacted.
Benson?
Jason, as far as the additional height, you were kind of, you didn't provide any kind of guidance as far as how much taller these poles might be. Is there a range that you're looking at?
Absolutely. Generally speaking, they're not going to be more than 15% taller than the existing height. And Puget Sound Energy, while it's not mandated, their preference is pole top extensions. So we use a device that's standard in the industry. It's a fiberglass extension that bolts on top of a pole, regardless if it's replaced or not, and the antenna is affixed to that.
So in terms of just feet, I mean, you mentioned 15%. What are we talking about in terms of feet?
Sorry, was it 15 or 5?
15, I'm sorry. One five, one five. And again, that's percent on about a 15-foot, I mean, a 45-foot pole, which about 35 feet is sticking up out of the ground. So we're looking at about six to eight feet above the existing pole.
I'll go ahead and -- Dave, did you have one? Okay. I see one of the questions for us to address is this. I thought it was here. I thought it was, do we want the mounting to be preferentially towards the top of the poles or -- yeah, there it is. Should the franchise limit where the small cell equipment can be placed on utility poles, pole top, and/or communication space? Yet I think I hear you saying that your inclination is towards pole top, and so I -- just help me understand what we're going to be asked here and how that relates to what your limitations or expectations are about where you want to mount equipment.
Okay, so we always work with the utility. While all utilities adhere to what's called the National Electric Safety Code, and that basically ensures that everybody working on the pole is, you know, meets OSHA standards and isn't going to get hurt, Puget Sound Energy prefers to go on a pole top extension. So now, Seattle City Light, they like to have everything below primary, and they actually prohibit the pole top extensions for the small cells, or they discourage them, let's say. So here, we do have a number of pole top extensions for that reason. And I -- it may help just to show the pictures here. I don't know if I can zoom in on that, but this here shows the antennas down below primary. So you can see the rectangle below the top of the pole. So that's what's called. And just to be clear, a number of terms are being thrown around, and I just want to make sure that we're perfectly clear. The pole, where the fiber and copper lines for communication are, is what's generally called the communication space. That's where our equipment is located. That's where the fiber is located as well. Then you move above that into what's called the restricted space or the supply space, and that's only where the electrical line workers are allowed to be, and that's where antennas can be placed. Or we can go above transmission lines and install the antennas on an extension. And that's where here, while this isn't a transmission pole, this does show the antennas on top. So that's the difference. I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Mayor.
You're talking about on the right side, showing it on top.
On the right side, yes.
But the left side, there's -- is there an antenna on top of that on the left side? I'm not seeing that.
So down in the middle of the pole is where the radios and the fiber transceivers are located, and then up above are the antennas in a shroud.
On the left side? I'm not seeing any on the left side.
I'm sorry, the schematic on the right side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. You've done a very good job of stealth work on the left side, if you've got it.
These are actual poles in the city of Seattle.
Okay. Dave?
So a couple of questions, one for you and maybe one for Christina. As I think about, we've gotten some feedback from the public. Obviously, everybody's concerned about how it looks, and when you say 80% of the installations will be pole extensions or pole replacements with additional height, and then we look at your map, and it looks like, just eyeballing, 65% of those will be in on view portions, particularly on the western side of the island. We've now degraded the view, just in fact, in a large section of the island. So how do you all think about addressing that, maybe in a different way?
Well, good question, and we addressed that early on. So when we first start to design this network, we know basically rough locations where the RF engineers need to have the coverage, the height, and the general location, and we walk those with our architects and our land use, Dan's team, and we try to pick locations that will not be in front of somebody's window. Now, it's not possible to do that 100% of the time, but we're very sensitive to the fact that we want to keep the antennas, let's say, to the side of the house, as opposed to the front of the house. Then our engineers go back, and they kind of tweak their design to adjust to those locations, and then we come up with a working set that you guys now are looking at.
Okay. But your view from a house overlooking Seattle is not necessarily just in front of that house.
That's correct.
About 180-degree view.
That's correct. We do believe, though, that the equipment that we install doesn't vary much from the existing electrical appurtenances that are already attached. So there's not a huge change to the overall impact of the view shed. RF engineers need to have the coverage, the height and the general location, and we walk those with our architects and our land use, Dan's team, and we try to pick locations that will not be in front of somebody's window. Now, it's not possible to do that 100% of the time, but we're very sensitive to the fact that we want to keep the antennas, let's say, to the side of the house, as opposed to the front of the house. Then our engineers go back, and they kind of tweak their design to adjust to those locations, and then we come up with a working set that you guys now are looking at.
Okay. But your view from a house overlooking Seattle is not necessarily just in front of that house?
That's correct.
About 180-degree view.
That's correct. We do believe, though, that the equipment that we install doesn't vary much from the existing electrical appearances that are already attached. So there's not a huge change to the overall impact of the view shed. It doesn't like block out entire, you know, areas of the view, but, you know, can add slightly.
And are there steffing, I guess that's the industry term, are there steffing execution elements that you guys have agreed to with Mercer Island, or is that not part of the agreement so far?
So, again, we're agnostic when it comes to steffing. Personally, I believe the best way to hide something is to paint it the same color as the pole and flush-mount it, route the cables nice and neat. But you can put shrouds around it, and sometimes that'll hide some of the different features on the antennas. The radio cabinets are already, or the radios are already inside cabinets, so they're painted to match and, you know, generally blend in.
Well, but we're seeing, that's not a good picture, because I don't think that may have a tell on it, but we're seeing white, white boxes on dark poles, and as I think about that being 15% taller and now a white box, and the external conduit, I mean, that, we don't want to paint the picture like you're not going to tell the difference.
Right.
So is Crown Castle interested in doing something to stealth it, or is that incumbent on?
Absolutely. And we'll, you know, we can paint it or provide any steffing options that the city feels is best.
And if I could, I'd just like to put a finer point on the pole replacement. In each case, and Jason had mentioned it, but it's not us selecting a short stubby guy pole and then trying to double the size of it. Many of these poles will not survive the loading calculation, so it's really a safety. We run a simulation on all the poles to make sure they can handle the weight. Some of these poles are old, and they get, you know, with time, they get weaker. So we replace the poles to make sure that they can support the weight. It's not just an issue of we needed to be twice as tall, or, you know, that guy pole example notwithstanding. And that's just an example.
But 80% of them are taller.
There will be a certain amount of extension, and some of that's attributed to the pole top extension, the antenna on top.
80% will be swapped out, and about 60% of those will be a little bit taller.
And if I could just bring your attention to this picture here, you see the antennas and equipment are painted to match brown, but there's a, there's a transformer that sits at the top of this pole that's white. And this is something that we've grown accustomed to seeing for as long as there's been utility poles. And so the idea is that this equipment that's being put on, or proposed to put on these poles is really in the same character as, it's smaller than transformers that are on every pole. There's equipment on all these utility poles. And that's sort of the idea, is that there is a cityscape, and with time, this will become just as invisible to the eye as the transformers that we've sort of learned to ignore.
Debbie?
Carrie has a...
Carrie?
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Weizen-Tiner's question, because, you know, at the negotiating table, it's been our assumption that council would be very much interested in any and all steffing measures, and to make these equipment cabinets as unobtrusive as possible. But that's the feedback we're trying to elicit from you tonight. So to the extent you can articulate that, that would be great. Thank you.
Debbie?
So earlier, you referenced that you're selecting these poles, and the phrase used was rough locations. So all things being equal, what is the approximate margin for movement that you have? If you have a pole, you know, sitting here on the corner of, let's just say, 100th and Street and 50th Street, how many feet could you move it without having materially impacting the quality?
That's specific.
It's a generalization.
It's site by site. I mean, a couple of hundred feet. Now, it depends, so you have topography, you have foliage, you have the, you know, the goals and objectives of the radio frequency engineers. They, they pick a spot on the map and say, "We want it here." My team comes along and says, "You can't have it here." There's a pole over here that's a much better location for these reasons. It's less obtrusive, it's out of the view shed, there's an existing pole, we don't have to place a new one. So this one meets, is the better criteria for the community. So every time you move away from the center, you do degrade the network slightly. But I would say within 100 feet, we have some flexibility, next pole over.
100 feet, roughly.
Don't hold me to that, but, I mean...
No, I just, I understood that there's a lot of footnotes and a lot of conditions, but I'm just trying to get order of magnitude.
Yeah. And the reason is, Deputy Mayor, is because these are so low-powered. It's, again, I think in the last time, I used an example of a Wi-Fi router in your office den. If you move it to the back bedroom, it may not actually cover the house. These are extremely low-powered, which is why they belong in the right-of-way versus on a hilltop two miles away.
Dan?
When you did your survey or whatever for the 38 poles, were you able to find places where you would not have to do anything to trees?
Yes. I mean, there's a lot of growth, and there may be some light tree trimming. Usually, when we go into an area like this, there, realistically, some trees have to be trimmed, but, you know, we can work with your city arborist as necessary. We worked in the city of Lake Oswego, takes great pride in their trees, and we were able to successfully build out a 21-node system there.
So, so it's, I mean, Debbie's comment about being able to move it, I would hope that when we draft this franchise agreement, putting that together with the need to preserve the trees, that we could require in the franchise agreement that instead of tree trimming be the first option, moving the cell tower would be the first option. Because I, I mean, again, a lot of us watch what goes on with tree trimming by PSE, and it is frightful what happens out there in the name of tree trimming. So I, I hear what you're talking about, some light tree trimming, but if you're using the same companies that PSE is using, it will not be light tree trimming. I mean, that's just the reality of what we live with, right now in the right-of-ways. So I, I would hope, if we have an opportunity here to select 38 sites, that you can be flexible enough, that you can find sites which don't require any tree trimming, and hopefully, we can provide for that in the franchise agreement.
Generally speaking, we try to pick poles away from trees. We don't want to hide the antennas in the trees. The greatest attenuator of RF signal is foliage. It doesn't reflect, it absorbs. And so if we want to make sure a site doesn't cover anything, just put it right in the middle of the trees, and it's completely ineffective. So we do try to, you know, place it away so that the signal can propagate.
Okay. Councilmembers, certainly if you've got other questions, we can do them as we go along, but I want to try and get us to run through this set of questions. And so I'm on page two, down near the bottom, where it says, "What steffing requirements should be included?" Then with both subbullets, colors and flush mounting. Any further wisdom you'd offer us before I ask the council what their, what their thoughts are on this? I've heard you say, "Color it the same as the pole," and flush-mount it is sort of what your expectation is, but anything else other than, yeah, we ought to just say yes to that?
Mr. Mayor, in the circumstance of mounting this equipment to utility poles, the, I think the thing you can do to call attention to it is put some creative or imaginary steffing requirement on it. And I say that in jest, because the best way to hide this is to paint it to match the pole and flush-mount it against the pole in this application.
We had also talked last time about, maybe, last time you were here, two weeks ago, or whatever it was, you gave us specific dimensions for these cabinets and for the towers and...
It's coming up, and then the next question here, I think. It is, yeah. Should the franchise limit the amount cubic feet of small cell equipment within a specific area, and then...
Well, I think that's...
And the dimensions for the small cell equipment, which is the fourth one.
Okay. Well, we can wait for that.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's knock them off one by one, if you don't mind. Okay, so you're saying, yes, color, paint them the same color as the pole, yes, flush-mount them makes sense to you. Anything from the council contradictory to that, or we thumbs up with that as the approach?
The one place where I'm struggling a little bit is, you know, all of your comments, I think, are quite accurate, and that is that each site is probably going to have a degree of unique attributes. You know, it's going to be on a slope, it's not on a slope, it's got trees nearby, it doesn't, it's right in a view corridor, it's not. It's going to require tree trimming, it's not. And what I'm trying to figure out here is, how do we create the parameters? So the people who are actually living in reasonable proximity to this pole could actually participate and say, "Hey, you know what? Based on whatever characteristics are really important, we think it should be there versus there," recognizing that it's, you know, within a space of remaining effective, you know, 100 feet or whatever it is, depending on your circumstance. So how do we come up with these characteristics, but at the end of the day, recognize that each and every site is not going to be the same, and therefore, we make a general statement or general set of, provide general guidance, and yet, it's not right for that particular street or that cluster of homes, based on the aesthetics? Have you worked with other communities so that there's some degree of local input that says, "Hey, you know what? In this case, we need to just do something a little bit different," rather than take, you know, the scoop of vanilla ice cream and serve it up?
Yeah, we have, and that's, and that's a good question. There's a, there's a certain, you know, generalities to utility maintenance, and I guess, to answer your question the best I could, it would be whatever parameters that you would, if you were entering into an agreement with an electric provider or someone else that had equipment on poles, what, you know, what guidance would you give them? You know, what, and it's something similar to that. But we can maintain a certain amount of flexibility in the agreement to, you know, under the circumstances, make the best selection, you know, whatever that might be. And I, we could work with city staff on, you know, how that input is gathered, if it's gathered, and through what form. What, you know, what does happen if you give, if every single site winds up being, you know, this long, protracted battle, then you wind up really not able to get these placed. So it's not an easy answer, probably wasn't that helpful, it's not.
Well, I mean, I appreciate you don't want to negotiate...
Christina, maybe you want to come up to this microphone, then we can not have to, you guys have to swap.
Yeah, I appreciate that you don't want to have to negotiate 38 sites with however many residents, because that's, that's not going to be fun for anybody, I'm quite sure. But at the same time, you know, I wouldn't want us to just, as I said, you know, provide sort of a vanilla recipe here, and then find that there could be something for one or multiple poles that would logically direct one to a different design. And I, and I don't want to prescribe how that is. It's a, it's a balance between negotiating every single pole, and yet, potentially missing the right solution for that community. So I think that's, that's the point that I make. How you guys make that happen, I'm certainly open to.
And so Steph has looked at almost this exact question, and we have some thoughts on it, and maybe if, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like us to move through to the policy questions, I have some slides, maybe to kind of articulate the questions and...
So I was jumping ahead of you, then.
But I'm fine, whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, or out of control we are, one or the other. If you want to run us through the policy questions with more input, we ought to take that as part of our conversation. So, gentlemen, if you're all right with shifting gears over to that, we'll do that. Yeah, sure, if you, if you want to be available to answer more questions, that'd be great.
And I'm asking Evan Maxim, Planning Manager, to come up. He's DSG staff that has looked at some of these policy choices and guidelines that we're going to talk through now. And maybe if you would like, we could start with location, what Deputy Mayor was just talking about, and take it a little bit out of order, or would you like to start with design? You okay?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
You're in control.
I know. Just in case, I have lots of backups. So, so one question we were just talking about, and that the French, we'd like some guidance in the franchise agreement for our location standards, and some of, some of the issues that we articulated as staff, you have already talked about, so this is great. And that is, where are we citing these poles? Crown Castle has said they are flex, flexible within a certain area, and so what we'd like to do is look at some of the factors that are important to council, the community, and how, how to cite, look at these locations and cite them as best as possible. And so one, of course, is to minimize significant impacts to trees. Now, you see that the phrase "significant impact" is, you know, a little mushy or flexible. So one, one way, we talked about this, and I'll have Evan jump in real soon, is to establish factors. So you see in the next bullet point, to minimize, minimize significant impacts to neighboring properties, and then we have a factor list. For example, is it in someone's view window? Is it already screened by landscaping and trees? Are there, is there a lot of other equipment already on this particular pole? So that's what we're looking from you, is what are the factors that are important to you? How, if, do you have a particular ranking? I think we're clear that we want to cite them, or I've seen that we got some direction about citing them, so there's little impact to trees, we don't have to really prune them, so.
It strikes me that, right now, when, I mean, you see this, for example, on some of the new developments, when someone puts in a large new house, there's no restrictions that I'm aware of in our franchise agreements currently, which prevents PSE or Comcast or CenturyLink or anyone else from dropping another transformer or whatever they're going to put on the poles, from running five more cables down the street, it just happens. So I think these are all, these are, these are factors which it's nice to consider, but, I mean, I, it's, I just am mindful of the fact that, that if these are so important, I wish the next time we renegotiate some of the other franchise agreements, we actually put those in there. And, because right now, we seem to have no control over it. And, and you get, I mean, like, the project going down on 32nd, down near, on the other side of West Mercer, the huge 10,000, 15,000-foot house, I mean, the amount of stuff going on the utility poles there is mind-boggling, when you go down there. And there's no, and I don't think the city has any say whatsoever on, on what the utilities are putting on those poles. So I'm, I understand what you're doing, so, but I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, that's, if this is what we're doing, then let's make this the standard going forward on all future franchise agreements.
All due respect, can you get back to the cell phone?
Well, Wendy, did, did you have something else, or you wanted to just try and raise it?
I just want to say that I want to remind us that we're here to talk about reliability as well. And I personally would love more bandwidth with my wireless service. I live down East Mercer Way, it's spotty, all four of my family members get on and the service drops. So I want to remind us that it's about getting better service to our residents, we're paying for it.
Okay, Evan. Well, Debbie?
Well, a question, this process question. So do you want us to make suggestions to add to this list, or what, are we pausing here, or are we going to go through all these different considerations and then come back?
Councilman Mayor, I'm Evan Maxim, one of the planners for the city. I think what we're really looking for here is, are we looking at the right set of criteria for drafting your franchise agreement? And then, to the extent there's an order of preference around locational standards, so we've heard trees, we've heard impacts to views, we have accessibility on the screen. If there's a consensus around order of preference, that would help us in drafting the franchise agreement for you to look at in detail on, at our next meeting, at our next conversation.
So the next conversation's the first, first reading, right?
It is the first reading. If there's something that we've missed, in terms of a locational standard or a, or design standard, certainly, if you think of it or know of it tonight, we would love to hear it, so we can get it into your preliminary draft. This is really just trying to get us something, so we can put stuff to paper for you to actually look at in your first reading.
Benson, you're, you're going to cut the Gordian knot here and get us, move forward?
Probably not, but, no, I guess, you know, as far as trying to give staff guidance, I mean, that's all they're looking for at this point, so I don't think it's necessary to get really into the weeds. I think the idea is to identify the factors, which I understand, and I think, I don't have any problems with the ones that have been listed. I guess I'd be, in the presentation, it was kind of, it dawned on me that perhaps we don't have as much choice in certain things. I mean, I guess the Deputy Mayor, I think rightfully, honed in on the issue of location. So I think for me, in this drafting of the franchise agreement, I really want to know to what extent the city has any kind of say, or is everything dictated by Crown Castle, for instance? Or, you know, for instance, this idea that all the antennas are going to be pole-mounted, a top pole or whatever they're called, and that's being driven by PSE or some other utility, you know, so does that mean that the city has no choice in where things should be mounted? I guess I sort of want to know that, but I also really want to make sure that the city in the franchise agreement maintains some discretion, some sort of review, oversight, approval process. And maybe that's all part of the franchise agreement, and you guys have that in mind, but I just want to make sure that, and that's important to me, that we have some say in all of this.
Yes, and so the parameters we're asking to, to set on location and design standards, for example, we would use to evaluate the 39 sites in front of us. So if, if you're, you know, if we're identifying significant impacts to trees, we don't want it located with a significant impact to trees, and we go through these 39 sites and see a handful of them that are doing exactly that, then we would push back on Crown Castle and look at different locations. That's one piece. The second piece is the pole top communications, that might be something we need to resolve. Based on our last meeting, when we drafted... Based on our last meeting, when we drafted the agenda bill, just as Jason said, it, they don't, PSE, our understanding was they don't have limits on it, so we thought that we would have discretion to bring that to you, if you like pole-top or communication space. We've seen applications for both, so we wanted you to weigh on that. It sounds like tonight, PSE has a preference for pole-top, but they also are proposing communication space. So I'm a, I'm not exactly clear what leverage we have on that, but it is, it is a choice we could probably discuss and at least bring up. If you have a strong feeling that you hate pole-tops, for example, then we would bring that to the negotiating table.
Let me try a question here. So it maybe gets to multiple questions at the same time. Is, what's the process? So Dan said the utilities just appear. Is there anything envisioned in this case where the neighbors would know of what was coming and have a right of appeal if they had heartburn about it? Or is it similarly expected the city just negotiates it and then it just gets put up and neighbors are not engaged in it at all?
That's a good question. One specific way I could think they could appeal would be on the actual right-of-way permit. So what we're talking about, the franchise agreement, is basically the land use piece of this. We're giving them permission to cite these and the right-of-way. What we'd like to do is have the franchise agreement list these 39 locations and specificity, and then they will get right-of-way permits to actually complete the actual work. So there may be a right of appeal on the actual right-of-way permit, but that's not a question we have looked at specifically.
Okay. Dave and then Debbie, just to break things up a little.
Because it is a right-of-way, it's almost like a lease of the property, right? And so if there were, we've talked a little bit about going underground with utilities at some point in certain parts of the island, so if a neighborhood went underground, these poles would still remain, or their ability to keep a pole there would still remain correct?
Most franchise agreements I have looked at have clauses that address undergrounding in some way to deal with it, and I'm, ask Crown Castle to weigh in on the technical and how that works in the real world. But I've seen franchise agreements, they account for future undergrounding.
So to the extent that the equipment can be undergrounded along with the fiber, will participate, the one part that can't be undergrounded is the antenna. So what we've worked out with other jurisdictions is, we agree to underground when the other utilities participate in the undergrounding process, and the city agrees to work with us to find another suitable location. And that might be a street light or something else that's near. But the fiber, the equipment, everything will go underground.
Debbie?
I think, as one of the factors that I would want to have considered is, some way to recommend, where possible, not impacting critically the functionality of the small cell, is that they be put on streets or places that have an equivalent set of equipment. And what I mean by this, here's a specific example. I'm looking at the map, and there's, number four is located just off 24th on 70th. 24th is a collector arterial, I believe, which is where you find a lot of other telecommunications and power equipment, assuming that there's sufficient service levels. Why could we not, through, one of the factors we create, say it goes on a collector arterial, and take it out from what is probably right in front of a house? So somehow can we use, and I raised this with the city attorney a week or two ago, about looking, you know, some sort of characterization to put it on collector arterials or some street designation, where you're going to find a lot of similar or equivalent stuff without impacting the performance?
Okay, I feel like we've got to pull ourselves out of the rabbit hole that we're headed down right now and try and get to some answers. And I can try and frame those, or we can come back to this and sort of try and break out of where we are on this slide right now.
Sure, I think we have some things written down, maybe we can run those by you and see if we're close.
Well, and part of what I'm concerned about is you're hearing popcorn ideas coming from council members. We have no sense of whether, where the rest of the council is on any of these things right now. And so I would caution, I would caution you against assuming that because you heard an idea once, that it represents the direction of the council. I think it'll put us into a tough spot if we're, if we're going to take all of those and assume that any idea is okay with the whole council. So with that in mind, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we don't get further down the rabbit hole with the list you've got at this point. But if you want to go there, we can try that, and then try and figure out how to get back out. My only thought was maybe we just get back to the core questions here and try and answer those, and see if we can get from that. Okay, I see some nods.
Before the council does that, I just wanted to weigh in on one thing. So I want to clarify that in our Chapter 1915 of our Land Use Development Code, right-of-way permits are considered ministerial acts. The decision authority is the city engineer, and the appeal authority is the hearing examiner. So I just wanted to make that point, because someone asked about appeals of that.
Okay. I'm going to try this off of this page, and we'll see where we get, and then we'll see if it adequately addresses this, or if there are the things that we have to do. So obviously, this first one was, do we want them stealthed? And it seems like it makes sense. You've said yes. Anyone object to that? Seeing no objections, let's call stealthing the order of the day. All right. Should the, I'm on number two now, or the second bullet here. Should the franchise limit the amount in cubic feet of small cell equipment within a specified area? And I want to try and understand, when you say a specified area, you're talking about area of hundreds of square feet? Or what are we referring to within, when we say an area? Are we talking about the area of a pole? Are we talking about the area of a block? Help us understand what the question is.
I think we were trying to get to the pole-top mounting or the communication space mounting. Do we want to have an overall size limit for the equipment on a specific pole? So this was around the specific pole design. Do we want to have a massing limit, if you will, for the size of the equipment?
So the next bullet was, should the equipment go on the top or in the communication space? This is, should they be putting, and I know that this question of should they be co-locating is coming up on the next page, so, but it seems like this is the same question, the way you've just framed it? Should they put multiple bits of gear on one pole or not?
So there are, not quite, if I may, Mayor. The pole-top equipment comes in different sizes. And what we're trying to do is just get our head around, do we want to specify in the franchise agreement a maximum size for pole-top equipment in general, or for communication space in general? And then follow that up with, do we even want to allow pole-top equipment or communication space equipment? And then to your point, subsequent to that, the co-location.
So do we have the latitude to specify maximum antenna? I mean, the box is kind of the box, but do we have a latitude to specify maximum antenna sizes?
I believe we do to some extent.
Mr. Mayor, could I weigh in on that? I think I can provide a little help. So the cubic foot maximum, 17 cubic foot is the number that's been put forth by the FCC and adopted by the state of Washington. It's a fairly standard industry maximum for cubic footage of the equipment. That doesn't include the antennas. What, I think what the council could do is show a strong preference toward the two-foot antenna. Essentially, for right-of-way, the antennas come in two sizes, two or four feet. I think two feet is appropriate for a residential neighborhood, and the simulations that you've seen today are two feet. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't conflate the pole-top versus comm space and the size limitation. I think the city is also within its rights to show a preference. If the city has a preference for comm space mounting, and there is no, it's not technically infeasible from PSE, I think the city is within its rights to drive industry toward a comm space-mounted solution. And I think that that might be helpful to think about in terms of location, too. The city is well within its rights to show preference. To the Deputy Mayor's question about arterial, they could show a strong preference, you know, has the applicant looked at arterial solutions? Does it meet the coverage needs of the applicant? You know, if the answer is yes, that's the spot. If it's no, you know, we have drive test data to show why, you know, that street isn't going to work, the first preference isn't going to work. So there's ways that the city can drive the applicant towards the preferred locations and design criteria without being hard and fast. And it also leaves some flexibility. If there's a particular ground swell against pole-top versus comm space in a particular build, then we have the flexibility to build either. So there is, I think there's a way to do it without locking yourselves or painting yourselves into a corner by showing preferences, and then, you know, it's up to the, the burden shifts to the applicant to show the infeasibility of that preference.
Okay. I mean, this sounds good, but I'm going to, I'm looking to Christina and Evan and see whether you have any disagreement with what was just said. Okay, so here are a recommendation here that sounded sensible, seeing staff has no problem with it, council okay with what we just heard, which is smaller antennas in the comm space and towards the arterials, all as preferences.
But the one thing, trees I assume is a given, but the 17 cubic feet, because I'm trying to relate that to the drawings you've been showing us, and that seems very different from the drawings. I mean, I can see that there might be situations, if you have a co-location, where you might be going to 17 cubic feet, but it strikes me that, I just, I would love to make sure that what you presented to the council is, in fact, what's built out there. And I don't think the boxes that you've been showing to us are 17 cubic foot boxes. That's a big box. I mean, that, you'll notice a 17-foot box sitting on the side of a telephone pole. So I would, I would, I mean, you can't stealth a 17 cubic foot box. So I just hope that we're figuring this one out right, and we don't just say, because the state for some reason has set 17 cubic feet, that that's acceptable on Mercer Island, without staff understanding that that's actually a requirement, because it's, again, I...
So the question is raised here, should the franchise authorize specific designs and dimensions for the small cell equipment? Can you just speak to what size equipment you're showing us or anticipating using, and how that...
So the 17 cubic feet is, as big as it may sound, when you just listen to 17 feet, it's four foot tall, two feet deep, and two feet wide. So that's 16 cubic feet, plus one foot for electrical disconnect, which is usually mounted on the side of the cabinet, and that's just required to make sure that you can secure power when working on it. So that would be in the communication space. And again, just for clarification, when Dan mentioned some guidance for location of the antennas, that would be the electrical supply space as opposed to the communication. So think of the communication space as 20 feet and below, so the lowest part of the pole, and the higher part would be the electrical supply space, also known as the restricted space. And in the course of the evening, we've also called it the comm space, so I just tried to clarify that. So the equipment would be in the comm space.
And the equipment that you've shown us here is of this two-by-two-by-four variety, and is that your standard?
Another good question. So you saw some pictures of boxes that are basically 16 cubic feet plus a disconnect. Those were the bigger boxes, the one that a council member noticed that, you know, were not painted brown. But what we have proposed in the construction drawings that you have is something that is considerably smaller. It's a PRISM unit, and it's roughly four feet tall and about 12 inches wide and 12 inches wide and deep. So it is smaller, but the idea is that if there was multiple antennas, we would install multiple PRISM units. So you would eventually use up that 17 cubic feet by installing multiple units.
And if I could just add a little bit more color, it might help. So I think another one of the questions before the council is whether they have a preference towards co-location or next feasible pullover. The 17 cubic feet maximum, for most cases, frustrates a co-location opportunity. So when you limit the size of the site to 17 cubic foot on one pole, you're pretty much saying, we don't want a multi-carrier solution on that pole.
It's the opposite of what he just said. He just said that on the PRISM unit, it's four-by-one-by-one, and then if you have multiple antennas on there, then you run out of space, and that that's when you hit the 17. So you just said you need 17 for one, so I, you're not saying the same thing.
It's a rabbit hole, because each carrier has different needs and different equipment styles. So is it a remote radiohead? Is it a standalone PRISM unit, which is an OEM that transforms the signal? We could probably bore you to death by talking about all the different configurations, because without additional antennas, it doesn't matter how many units you put down in the comm space, you just can't make it work. So it's pretty complicated these days. Carriers want 700 megahertz, 850 megahertz, 1900 megahertz, and 2100 megahertz. So often, there's four amplifiers within a box. So again, there's different form factors. What you show on the, what you see on the construction drawings is one of the simpler and smaller units, but the 17 cubic feet, as adopted by state law, as pretty much a standard, is probably the more common solution throughout the state and throughout the country, as of today, and that's subject to change.
Okay, so I'm trying to get us back on track here again. So we've, I think, cleanly covered the first and third bullets on this list on page two. The second and fourth bullets, I think, we're still not entirely clear on. So the second one being, should the franchise limit the amount in cubic feet of small cell equipment within a specified area? And so this is the, state says 17 feet. I mean, that's what we're trying to get to here. Somebody help me out with, with what...
I mean, you don't have to specify, if you don't, I mean, if that's not something that you're concerned about, we don't have to specify that in the franchise agreement.
But I mean, the maximum is 17, based on state? Or could we say we want, we could be up to 50? Because we're Mercer Island, we want a big... I mean, my point is, is 17 the ceiling, or 17...
Yes, 17 is the ceiling.
17 is the ceiling, as mandated by the state, so we cannot go over 17? No.
17 cubic foot is a generally accepted size limitation for small cells. If the city says 17 foot is the maximum, then that's the maximum.
And if the city says eight is the maximum, because you've said that four-by-one-by-one, I guess four-by-one-by-one, I guess four is the actual volume there, could we say that, and you'd say that's fine with us? We'll just put them on different poles? Or do you look at that and go, oh, that doesn't work?
It's probably not going to work.
Okay.
No, not today.
The sweatshirts pop up on your brow when we do that. I'm just trying to understand what our, what our range of options is here and what it gets us if we go in any particular direction within that range.
Right. And so if I could make another recommendation, Mr. Mayor, what we've seen in other locations is that we develop an Exhibit A, which has more detailed drawings of what we call a form factor. So really, what we're talking about is a form factor. And what we do is develop an Exhibit A, we develop a form factor that's approved by this council, that says, so long as the subsequent applications meet this form factor, then they fall within the parameters of this agreement. And it'll give more specificity around the size of the equipment, you know, the dimensions and what have you. So that was a popular technique that we used years ago when we were getting agreements across California, was give the electants a form factor so that they all can agree this is okay in our city, and then going forward, it's more of a streamlined process. And it's less visual than we're trying to conjure up in our head, and something on paper that staff can weigh in on and the council can have an opportunity to weigh in on.
And this may sound familiar to you, because one of your exhibits, I forget which one it is in your agenda bill, is exactly what Dan was just explaining. We call it approved configuration, which has some equipment designs and dimensions. So that is one option, how we can address this.
Council members, you okay with seeing a form factor concept and trying to decide whether it's okay with us?
Yeah, does it put us in an awkward position going forward? So if AT&amp;T is the next suitor, and we have relegated ourselves to 17 square feet or a form factor, that pole is now maxed out, forcing that next suitor to use additional poles. Does that put us in a position we don't want to be in? There's one question.
Well, right.
You see what I'm saying, that we're, we're...
You're forcing ourselves to propagate additional poles with any additional service.
Yeah, you're sort of forcing this final question on our list, right? Which is, which is saying if the form factor's, I mean, it's what I said, if the form factor, if the cubic volume's only four feet, clearly you only get one on a pole, or zero on a pole.
Maybe we could say that the form factor per carrier, could we say that?
If you want multiple tenants on the same pole, if it's technically feasible. And that gets to the other policy question. And that gets to the other policy question, council member, about whether the city prefers to have, you know, multiple tenants on one pole, larger, fewer sites, or next feasible pullover, smaller, more sites.
So, just a way to try to frame that, you're going to, we hope, state a policy preference for co-location or proliferation. So they're either going to be greater volume on fewer poles, or more equipment on more poles. So we're asking for a policy preference between those two.
Okay, so I'm hearing this proposal of a form factor. Staff's call it a, what did you call it, approved configuration?
Form factor.
Yeah. Are we as a council okay with that approach? I'm not, Dave able to answer at all your question of how we then actually sort through the details of that.
Well, you just have to answer Carrie's question, and then that sorts it out.
Well, I guess, I mean, that would-
More or bigger.
Yeah, in turn force, okay. Well, I mean, let's go to that question. Let's try, more or bigger? Anyone? Anyone?
More, more, because they're smaller and spread out, they might not be as big and obvious.
Evan, Christina, anything from staff on, on this regard? If, if the answer's no, that's fine, I'm just-
Pardon me. There's really not a good basis to give you a recommendation on this. This is purely a, to me, a matter of choice, preference.
Okay. And from your perspective, what do other, what do you think, and what do other cities do?
It's a good question, Mr. Mayor. So I think 10 years ago, cities had a strong preference toward co-location. As the size of the equipment and the capabilities has increased, I'm seeing fewer co-location opportunities. I'm seeing more cities driving toward going to next feasible pullover, staying on the same fiber line, going next pullover. It's a slimmer design. Increasingly.
You said, as the size has increased?
And that's the one, you know-
I would have assumed the, the equipment had gotten smaller over time.
Yep. Normally, with technology, that's the correct assumption. The thing today is that 10 years ago, we were looking to provide coverage, where people were actually making phone calls on their phones. Today, it's all about data, and the equipment is completely changed, they're more capable. So each of these sites now really operates as a small individual site, whereas before they were just repeaters for, you know, that, that actually accomplished a lot less. So yes, the equipment is not shrinking like you would normally think it is. I don't have any reason to think it's going to get much bigger, but it's certainly not, it's not smaller than it used to be.
All right. And you, and so what you've seen over time is a shift from co-location towards dispersion or proliferation?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. I don't see many co-located small cell sites on wood utility poles. They're, they're a little bit bigger, they do actually look a little unusual as compared to transformers and other things that you see in the cityscape, in my preference, in my opinion.
Okay. So council members, Wendy has said, spread them out. Jeff, I think you're, spread them out, spread them out. Okay, so we're on spread them out. All right.
Can we work on the steffing?
So, well, so just, I think, I think, I thought we covered it, but we can go back to it. So this, we've, we've covered this last question, and this, now, for spreading them out, this gets us back, when I want to do is come back to this question of volume, because that did tie to this too, right? But this is the form, the form factor, if we, we've kind of said, do, give us a form factor option. So can we call that okay at this point, or do I, do you need more? Okay, so that, let's, let's go back, if you think there's a steffing question, still the-
So maybe this is a form factor plus steffing. So form factor, is there something that we can include that for any updates or replacements, that the carrier is required to use the smallest possible form factor available for the service that they are providing? So that's a go-forward, shrink it as we go? Is that-
May I offer some-
Please.
Experience? So it's not uncommon for us to see cities reserve a right unto themselves to revisit the technology in a period of time. So the language might say something like, in five years, the applicant or Crown Castle will conduct an audit with city staff on equipment to ensure it's the smallest size that's commercially available, something of that nature.
Should.
Are you in the market, or, you know, maybe we're-
Yeah. I assume everyone's okay with that one.
With what?
With that proposal. I mean, that sounds like something-
And it works entirely in our favor, so.
Where I was going with that, to jump over to the steffing thing, is to have similar language, that, that they, every installation will have the maximum amount of steffing, whether that's height, paint, additional appurtenances, those kinds of things, you know, possible in order to achieve the level of service required by the carrier. So we don't say, you have to make it look brown and keep the wires stapled to the pole. We say it's maximum to your capability that allows you to get the service that you want to get. Is it, Christine, are you cool with that?
Is that direction from the council, or just your opinion?
I'm now looking to you, any, any sort of freak-out moment over-
No, 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 no.
It was like that, okay? All right? No one, no one will.
I don't want to, Wizzen Tyner, is that correct?
Very sporting of you to go there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, I'm assuming that it's taken as a good idea, then. Okay. I think this, I think we've boiled down to this top of the Page Three question, which is, should the franchise agreement allow for the administrative approval of additional sites? And if so, should this be limited to a particular number of sites? If so, what criteria should be used? So are we trying to have this come back to council when there's a request for more positions, or do we want to let staff do it? Debbie?
As you can hear, and I'm sure we're not unique, there's a lot of questions about how this is going to play out in the end, and how it's going to look. Because I know I'm not an aesthetics specialist, I know I'm not a small cell specialist, et cetera. And while I don't want to be a process pain in the neck, I want to see how these first 39 look, before I go ahead and provide administrative approval for additional sites. I want to see, at the end of 39, I want to see pictures, I want to see how they look, I want to have some sort of assessment. And if they're great, and everything seems to be going the way we want it to, then I'm willing to look at more of a, an administrative process, but I want that first milestone in there.
Okay, so there's some nods. Christina, Evan, how would, some thought as to how you might accomplish a check-in after this, or, you know, what you do with the code language that still allows a check-in?
Well, I think it would be pretty simple, that, you know, this franchise agreement would only approve these 39 sites, and any additional sites would require a franchise amendment, which would come back to council then, to allow you to do your check-in, look at the, look at whatever data and metrics you wanted to see about these first, first round, and then make your decision, make adjustments to the franchise agreement accordingly or not.
So I, I'm hearing two slightly different things here. One is check-in, meaning, let's do this run, and then, and then decide what comes next. And the other is, at least what I see is, maybe the framing in the, in the agenda bill is, they always come back to us. And so, and my inclination is to not have them always come back to us, but, but I'm comfortable with what Debbie's suggesting, which is that they, that we do a check-in after this first round, and make sure we, we haven't missed something. Other council, but, so you're giving me the quizzical look like, I don't know, I don't know how to do that, or I don't know what you're talking about. So I'm just-
So I thought of it, just like I had said, a little, a little bit simpler, but I hadn't thought about what a check-in would look like. Then we still have the question of, what are you doing if Crown Castle comes back with a dozen more sites? Then we still have that question, are you doing a franchise amendment? And then we, we're sort of forced to do that check-in, I guess is what I was thinking of. Or are you allowing administrative approval if it meets the form factor that we've fleshed out? Or even another alternative is, okay, we have these 39, we'll allow another 11 to make it an even 50. Staff can administratively approve that, and then anything after that, we would need a franchise amendment.
Let me try just a different proposal for a moment. This hearkens back to some, I think, other code stuff we've done, where it comes back to council for, for a check. Imagine that we just say it's going to be a staff function, but we also say that after these are installed, we want a staff report back on how it all went, and whether we heard complaints, and pictures, and things like that. Would that serve the interests of the council?
That wouldn't, no, I don't, well, at least I don't think from what Debbie said, because, well, I thought you wanted to find out is whether the franchise agreement's working in the way we anticipated it working, before we go beyond the 39. So if it's purely just a staff check-in, you're not going to have the luxury of rescinding a franchise agreement at that point. So I think what we're looking for is, say, this franchise agreement covers only 39, and that before you grant another extension, or you extend it beyond the 39, you have to come back before council, and council has to approve going beyond 39, probably though, with the understanding that, once we're satisfied that it's working, that you won't have to do that after that. But the next, after the first 39, this franchise agreement only covers 39, and so you'll need an amendment to go beyond that, and, and then we take it from there.
I see nods, I see nods all around. Okay, so, all right. Do you need anything else? Because I think we're at the end of the list.
I think, I think that'll keep us busy.
All right. Thank you very much, to both of you. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, it just gets better from here.
You got to come back for the budget process, you'll love that, I mean-
We're doing water.
Council members, I think we've got relatively short agenda bills coming up here. You want to keep going, or does people need a break? Agenda Bill 5204, 2015 Water System Plan Adoption.
Are they going to do like, American?
Rona, you got applause earlier, let's see how you do now.
Good evening, mayor and council member. For the record, Rona Lane, I'm the utilities engineer. And staff and our public works team are here tonight to bring in the 2015 Water System Plan, the Complete Water System Plan, for council's adoption. So just a brief introduction of the Water System Plan. The purpose of the Water System Plan, it's for our system overall planning. And I'll give you a brief system overview, also the plan update schedule. And next, I will show you the key updates we did, and then following that would be the next step. On the purpose of our Water System Planning, the Water System Plan provides the guideline for our water utility planning, and, can you hear me? And it's required by Department of Health, that we updated every six years. And in this Water System Plan, we look at the, you know, the water demand, the supply needs, to looking beyond the six years and 20-year horizon. We also look into our capacities, again, look at the demand and our storage, to make sure we have sufficient storage to supply the water needs. And in the system, and in this Water System Plan, we also have a component looking at the operations and maintenance, and that including water use efficiencies and water quality compliance. And also, in addition, we have capital improvement program. We use it to prioritize our system improvements, and, so we plan ahead our, you know, do our system planning every biennium, and six, they are our six-year plans. And also, we have finance analysis to, to, you know, just make sure we have the financial supply, I mean, support to do our system improvements. Our system overview, we have our main supply is from Seattle Public Utilities. We have two 4 million gallons tank, two pump stations, 150 miles water main, 85 PRV stations. We have five major pressure zone, and 30 small, smaller pressure zones, and mostly on the outer, on the, around the island. And our service area cover this number of retail customers, and we have roughly 7477 For this round of Water System Plan Update, we present the draft plan to Utility Board in May 2014, and we did a study session with the council in July, two years ago. And right after the council study session, we submitted the plan to DOH for their first round review. At the time, we were planning to bring the final plan to City Council for adoption in October 2014. Then we had a schedule change. So at the end of September, we had the boil water advisory event, and then, you know, following that, we have the response action plans, we have some requirement from DOH in, including the certain plan component updates. So since two years ago, we've been working on it, and the, all the plans come together, and we submitted to DOH just in July, and was accepted by them. And then in July, also, we gave Utility Board an update. So tonight, we're bringing the complete plan for our council's adoption. And the, the key updates you see here, it's basically what we have done the last couple of years, because you've, most of you, well, some of you have seen the draft plan in 2014. And so the, the key updates in, in this complete plan was including the cross connection control program, the color form monitoring plan, and also some minor edits from the review comments provided back to us from DOH and SPU, Seattle Public Utilities. So from here, we are asking for council's adoption tonight. After council's adoption, this plan will be submitted to DOH for their final acceptance. And, and then our next plan update would be, would begin in 2020. I think that's the last slide. So I would leave it to council to see if you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm, I'm guessing that because we've seen so much water stuff over the last few years, that we're feeling pretty good about where our water system stands at this point, and, and we can, we can move pretty quickly on this one. But are there questions, or are things council members want to discuss here? Seeing none, I'd love a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 1517, adopting the 2015 City of Mercer Island Water System Plan.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. Should have done that back in September of 14, but there you go. Thank you very much.
You should have done that before the council. That's excited for two hours, and we're waiting to swallow.
It's true. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Bill 5222, I-90 Loss of Mobility Negotiation Status Report, with Kirsten Taylor. Welcome, Kirsten. Welcome Kirsten. Thanks, Steph.
There's nobody left. And then there was one. So, good evening. I'm going to give you a, a quick update, this council meeting on the Loss of Mobility As we have said before, but it does bear repeating, the community's priorities have become our negotiating principles. And those goals are to access, secure access to new R-8A lanes, to limit and mitigate traffic impacts in and around the town center, to increase commuter parking options for islanders, improve last mile connections to light rail, and minimize impact of regional bus operations so that they're no greater than current levels, and of course, to require safe, convenient pedestrian and bicycle access to the light rail. As was reported during the two previous status updates, there will be ongoing outreach to Mercer Island residents this fall. The following outreach activities are scheduled with more in the works and we especially encourage the community to come talk with council and staff this Sunday at the farmer's market between 10:00 and 3:00. We are also open to speak to community groups who invite us and we are planning a city-sponsored open house this fall, late October, early November. We will keep the community updated on that. Just as a reminder to the community, we also share news and updates via email, social media, e-newsletter, and on our website. We do appreciate the community's past input and definitely remain open, well, will remain open and share as much information as we possibly can throughout and we welcome community comments.
How many slides have you got Kirsten?
Six.
Okay. What do you want to do? Questions at the end, questions in the middle?
Ask away.
Yeah, just two quick ones on the public outreach. Number one, are we thinking of methods that are more broad? I mean, there's one open house, it's, you're in a community center location and you get 300 people or 150 people or something. I mean, I'm just thinking because we're in this room and we're broadcast, is there a way of doing, are you thinking of ways that have broader reach, like having the open house be televised and questions come in via Twitter, Facebook, whatever method and we can address those? You know, you have a live studio audience and are able to broadcast. Are you thinking about how we can get out to broad? Because most of these outreach meetings, you know, during the day, it limited groups.
Sure.
And the meetings we've had that have been at schools have had 100 people, 150 people. And if we broadcast?
Yes. I, I think they are great ideas, but we haven't used that kind of technology in the past, so we would just have to think through what we can do, how we can do it. It would be, you know, breaking ground for us at the city, not for others, so we can certainly look into that. This month, we're on a pretty tight timeline to try a lot of new and innovative things. So I'm not saying no, but I'm saying we have to just be realistic about how much time we have to plan for something like that, but I like the thinking.
Yeah, I mean, a fallback is to say, record it and broadcast it over our Mercer Island TV at a later date so at least people see the presentation and, and then, or, and then have it streamable.
Yeah.
So even if it's delayed broadcast, which brings me to the second question about FAQs. I mean, we're getting a lot of questions.
Can I actually build off your first point?
Okay, go there.
Because I think there were two elements to it. One is the question of what audience we're reaching and do we need to have broader outreach so that it's not specific to these particular communities? So that's point one and I think we, I'd be surprised if, if there was not consensus around the need to have some more broad-reach, open-type forums. The second question was how we do it. And I think Jeff's suggestion, which I'm always going to be behind, is that we look for some new and more innovative ways. Given the constraints we have in terms of time and experience, it might be that we weigh towards some of the older, traditional open houses and/or forums that we record here in, in the room, but let's, let's not lose one for the other at this point.
Yes, yes. And we also will make sure that we are presenting, we will be scheduling every council meeting an update. It might be five minutes, it might be 30 or 45 minutes so that we can provide updates to the community and direct them to come back to the recording from a council meeting if there's a particular presentation that we want to make sure the community has access to.
Then I'm probably done. Frequently asked questions, we had a document we put out. More questions are coming in and I'm seeing, is, is that document a living document?
It is.
That we continue, that as questions get asked?
Yes.
I can, if I get them and someone says it hasn't been answered, get it to you?
Yes.
And make sure that that, they go up and questions?
We've, we've updated it twice so far and we anticipate continuing to update as new questions come in.
Thank you.
So progress on negotiations. The city has successfully urged both Sound Transit and WashDOT to come back to the table to work on I-90 vehicle access options and other negotiating priorities for Mercer Island. The mayor, city manager, and Representative Clivern met and will meet again with the directors of Sound Transit and WashDOT. There are also high-level staff meetings that are now occurring regularly. And a focused work plan is being developed so that we can, I think, we heard this from council members, that we can count back from the, the date of when the center roadway closes in, in June 2017. So we can count back to today's date and see what do we need to get done during this timeframe. We're creating this work plan so that all of our negotiating partners also are buying into that timeline or that we can push them into that timeline if we need to so that we are adequately making progress on negotiations each step of the way. And we'll know if we get ahead of schedule or fall behind schedule and then we can address that very quickly. And that way, we're going to ensure that, or we will plan to ensure that negotiations, negotiations stay on track and on time. So another new piece of information is about the I-90 Access Alternative Study. Access to I-90 and R-8A lanes is one of the city's highest priorities. The list of access alternatives will be presented at the October 17th council meeting, so the next council meeting. And we will include alternatives that are going to be studied that were mentioned in the August 5 FHWA letter and others that have not previously been contemplated publicly. So there's a lot for the community to learn if they want to, what's the word, dial in, call in, look in, watch, watch the council meeting. The community will have opportunity to comment and suggest other alternatives to be considered as well. So we've all been eagerly awaiting the KPG Traffic Engineering Study, which will be looking at areas such as changes to I-90 ramps with the closure of the center roadway, potential restrictions of Mercer Island SOVs from I-90 R-8 lanes and Island Crestway westbound on-ramp, reductions to westbound I-90 on-ramp capacity for the town center and Island Crestway, impacts to local streets, intersection operations, travel time analyses, and more. KPG will present the study to the council and community at the next council meeting on October 17th. And then, once the public has had a chance to read and review the report, we will invite the community to comment and give input to the city on this report. And that's the update for today.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Kirsten? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us then to other business. Councilmember absences, there are none this evening. Are there any upcoming that we should be aware of? Planning schedule then. Pam, are you?
Yes.
Able to walk us through that?
Yes, we, I, I just wanted to point out after the discussion on Crown Castle that it will be coming back for its first read on November 21st. That's on your schedule here and that was so that we would avoid, and Crown Castle was fine with this, the whole budget period when all that budget work is going on. And then the joint meeting with the school board is coming up on October 13th and the agenda is going to be primarily about how they finance the school district and contrasted to how we finance the city. And we, as you heard earlier this, this evening, we both depend heavily on property tax, but the limits on how we raise that and use it are very different. So their finance director is going to explain the underpinnings of their budget and Chip is going to be doing the same so we can hopefully come to some kind of understanding of how each other pays for operations and improvements. And I think that's, that's pretty much it.
The, the other thing that'll be on that joint agenda is how are the traffic situations working around the new schools? Cameras on the buses, the new walk routes around the, the new elementary school, all those sorts of things. And I thought that was a timely topic for us at this point to hear, hear more about. Anything else?
It's the regular scheduled meeting of the school board, so.
5:00 PM.
Says 5:00 to 7:00. And, and for them, it is a regular meeting, but for us, it's a special meeting. So we were cautioned that we could not add items to the agenda because it's a special meeting for the city.
Okay, board appointments.
Are we gonna have a, somewhere an executive? Session about negotiations with personnel?
Oh, yes. Right. We are planning for that to happen on the 17th, which is your next council meeting. You will hear negotiations as well as reference check information.
Board appointments, we have none. And council member reports. Dave, you want to start?
Yeah, so just a quick one on the PTSA as the PTSA liaison. A couple of things they were, which you'll hear about at the, at the meeting, there was some concern about parking around the new school and that there's, there's a tremendous amount of no parking signage around the new school, between the new school, Northwood and, and the high school, so they wanted to talk about addressing that. So I directed them to Scott to have that conversation. They also brought up again regarding our I-90 negotiations, their concern about the feedback they've had from the teachers in terms of retention. And so I encouraged them to send that data directly to us, which I think actually happened and Pam and I emailed, I think that happened today. So we've got that in our.
I didn't receive it yet today, but Superintendent Plano said.
But we're ready, we're ready for receiving. So that's my big.
Catcher's pick.
Okay. Dan? Debbie?
Yeah, last week I was at the Growth Management Planning Council meeting and it was, it was actually primarily a study session when we were going through what is sort of the administrative process behind growth management and then the growth allocations, both jobs, housing, et cetera. It was super interesting meeting. I have a follow-up scheduled with Scott and with some people from PSRC. The extent to which anybody's interested in understanding the intricacies, happy, happy to invite you along and, or share, but I think it's quite fascinating when you understand what sits behind it, given all the conversations we had with regard to town center growth, et cetera.
Jeff?
This weekend, Mayor and I were at a ribbon cutting of the tile mosaics up at the, up at the Luther Burbank Park and it was really nice that it was at the same time as YFS was having their open house and a beautiful day and a great seahawk wind. So it was actually a really, really nice event and those tiles are quite gorgeous and look forward to other projects around the island that we have on the dock and to the Arts Council.
Randy?
I'll just say kudos to the IMS ribbon cutting on the Saturday, the day before.
Benson?
Just have a few things. I attended the YFS Community Advisory Board last week and with the help of the YFS staff, the board, a number of, of course, our high school students, including Wendy's daughter, they're beginning the process of planning, organizing the next community forum, which I think, once, once the data's been set, I'll certainly pass that on and it'll be an opportunity for council members to sit in and talk with young people and with parents. The earlier, well, earlier this week, I, or last week, I guess, I'm sorry, I attended a ARCH workshop and that was actually a fascinating workshop. The, the discussion was basically, not a surprise, the lack of, the decreasing number of affordable housing and the fact that ARCH is asking people, asking cities to consider how to increase dedicated funding for affordable housing. So you should expect, and frankly, we might want to schedule Arthur Solven to come in, you know, maybe a study session of some sort, but there is a, again, a growing need to have dedicated funding. So one of the things that they talked about, and actually there was a number of cities that were there and they all weighed in and gave support, thumbs up to the idea of looking at the formula that has been used in the past 20-odd years for figuring out what the Mercer Island or what every city's contribution is to the trust fund. And so there's, people want to take a look at that and that might result in maybe a greater share, greater contribution by every city. So that's something that is perhaps down the road for future consideration. Then I guess the, appreciate this opportunity because I, I hope, I'm just, there's four things and I'm, would hope to get sort of the thumbs up from council members and this is to be able to take back to the Public Issues Committee meeting on October 12th for SEA. So I've sent out, and I, you know, I don't know if the city manager has also sent out the same information, but there's four items, four topics that the PIC would like to get thumbs up from their members so that basically they can, the PIC then makes a recommendation to the SEA board and then it's up to the SEA to decide what to do. So the four items are basically they're looking for kind of a general support for trying to expand the low-income housing tax credit. Senator Catwell and Senator Orrin Hatch are the prime sponsors right now and that would hopefully double the amount of credit available for certain low-income housing. And this particular credit is one of the major sources of funds, incentives for developers for low-income housing. So that's one thing that people would like to see the PIC say thumbs up. So I don't know if people have weighed in or at least have thought about that, but I would encourage a thumbs up in support of this low-income housing. So am I asking for, or Mayor, do you want?
So council members, is there a willingness to engage in this? I'm, I'm happy to join Dan in that, but.
Okay, okay.
I think you've got a.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So all I'm going to do is basically when the PIC asks, you know, are you in support or is your city in support, I'll just say yes and then it'll be up to them to take it to the SEA board. Next item was basically changes to the 1% cap on real property taxes. And they're basically looking for changes down in Olympia that would allow cities to choose, it's not mandated, but would hopefully if passed, would allow cities more options to basically go beyond the 1% cap.
Sorry, Benson, just for point of clarification, are the next three, the three legislative agenda?
Correct.
Or the legislative priorities that are being proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know we also have those scheduled for discussion. Yeah, okay.
Benson, the proposal and the adjust the property tax cap strikes me as being problematic for Mercer Island.
Again, this is, again, this is simply an option that would be available to cities if they so choose.
No, no, but what it says, it replaces a 1% cap with a gross limit whose maximum is inflation plus the rate of population growth. So inflation has been like less than 1% recently and population growth, although everyone continues to worry about it, never happens on Mercer Island. So I, I just, I, I think we all, I shouldn't say we all, I, I would think we're in favor of the property tax cap being adjusted, but I'm concerned that we're proposing something which might. which might not be in our own best interest.
Okay.
So...
I think that, I'm not sure that you're...
The formulas here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's accurate to say that it's been below 1%. I think it was below 1% for just one year, and this is just a recollection.
But I think, but I think the point is we don't want a formula that's going to potentially...
I agree with, I agree with your point. I would, I'd like to see some data or understand it.
I like, we just got that thing from the MRSC that the implicit price, price deflator was under 1%, and I don't know how that tracks with the CPI, but the...
Certainly at the meeting, we can voice, you know, a need for additional data.
I think there should be some, some minimum or something in here that we can, so we don't get tripped up in some way and that's going to hurt us.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Dan, as you well know, I mean, the whole, you know, one of the unsung mantras is basically, you know, you try to support positions that don't hurt you, and so basically, if this is something that might be adverse in Mercer Island, I mean, there may be some other cities that might not be in support, so.
I doubt this is adverse to us, but, but what you're, Dan's point, we should understand it a little bit better to understand where it's going to be.
Okay, and we can certainly ask for more.
Yeah, we just, we want to use this to get out of the structural deficit problem.
Right, right.
Rather the deeper into it.
Okay. So I'm not going to, I mean, I'm going to ask for additional data. I'm not going to basically indicate any kind of support as written.
Let me just ask a question. So the core thing here is to try to get away from having the cap on increases annually be low, as low as it is. So is it safe to say this council would favor an intended change which is, has the intent of trying to increase our city's flexibility? If we can get there, then we can at least give a direction back to them that says, they can figure out the data and do that themselves.
Well, the detail here says, replace arbitrary blah, 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 limits revenue growth influencing factors, inflation plus the rate of population with a total cap of 5%. So I think if we focus on the 5%, I'm going to feel pretty good, but without that intervening stuff that could get us deeper into the hole, as you say. So you say, we, so if we were to rephrase it, it would be lifting the 1% property cap with a total cap of 5%. Just simplify it down.
So what are you looking at? Because I was looking at the thing Benson emailed you.
No, there's, there's actually, there's additional data that was sent out, earlier materials.
I'd appreciate Chip's input on this.
And I'm wondering about these issues vis-à-vis the December 5 legislative advisory agenda session that we already have planned. Are there more items on that? Is this a subset of that, orthogonal to it?
Yes.
Parallel to it, whatever.
Well, this is the PIC. So our legislative agenda is what we use to then inform the legislature directly. PIC is parallel really with that, with a much broader constituency pushing on the legislature. So it's parallel, but we're one small city where there, you know, whatever, a million voices in, you know...
I just think they're helpful to discuss maybe at once, and maybe it feels late for the input you need.
Yeah, well, again, the PIC is trying to push their own legislative agenda so, towards the SCA board, and so I think there's enough questions left open. I'll see if we can get more information on this particular issue. But the other two items is basically to support additional funding for public health. Is that a controversial position or something that people have heartburn with?
Well, but I just want to keep us on this one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I want to keep us on this one for just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I thought I was, I was on the verge of getting counsel saying, yeah, give, give thumbs up to something that increases cities' flexibility. I think Wendy, you were, you were not there.
I did that.
Okay.
If we can have increased flexibility, we're not giving a vote.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So I, okay, so Benson, you've got authority to say we favor greater flexibility in, in the property tax cap.
Right. It's like the rising tide thing on the public education spending. We don't...
We don't want to get, find ourselves weirdly disadvantaged by it.
Disadvantaged. But if everybody can rise, great.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. And then on the public health, I'm going to assume that everybody is pro-public health here, except Dan, who says he's not.
I mean, you're going to be sitting.
All right, so I think you got a thumbs up on that as well.
And the last one is on additional funding for affordable housing. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think...
That's just more of a policy issue, and it's just, you know, the details got to work out.
You got, you got support for that as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right. For myself, I, along with some of you, attended the ribbon cutting at the middle school, which was great, and attended with some of you the mosaic at the Luther Burbank, as well as got a tour of our YFS, by our YFS staff, of what happens there, and that was great too.
That's building.
Yeah. And that's it, that's all I've got. So is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. 9:50.